Good morning, everybody. Connie, take us up. And we are going to bring us into order for this notice for this special meeting. And I'm going to call at this time for invocation. I would ask you to stand, please, out of respect. And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flags. I've asked Commissioner Modest to provide us with invocation this morning.
Dear God, thank you for today. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for family and community. Thank you for the purpose that you bring us here is to be the voice of those that want to see improvements and advocacy and change here in our community. We pray today for our community, for those who are suffering, for those who need healing, for those who are still dealing with COVID and all the other health emergencies that are facing us. We pray today for Commissioner Gonzalez, who's not here. We pray for all of our staff and their families. And we just humbly ask that you guide us to find the words to be able to advocate for our positions, but then come together as a community to move us forward. In your holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Okay, everybody. It's July 29th. I cannot believe this month has gone by already. We are at 901 Leopard Corpus Christi, Texas. That's the Noises County Courthouse on the third floor, Noises County Commissioners' courtroom. And I believe the time is 8:40. And I think it was 8:35 when I first started.
It was 38.
38, thank you. Thanks for keeping track of us here. I do certify that a quorum is present. Commissioner Chesney is here, Commissioner Modest, Commissioner Hernandez and myself, with one absence with Commissioner Joe Gonzalez. At this time, I'd ask if there's any disclosures of conflicts of interest. It's item number D. It's a recurring item. It allows for us at this time to declare that there could be an item on the agenda that shall be declared as having a conflict of interest would allow for the rep for it would allow or disallow exactly the participation of voting. And we ask for any commissioners to come forward at this time. If you discover later in the meeting that a conflict is disclosed, please, please alert me and we will make the appropriate action, take the appropriate action at that time. Tim, would you come give us a safety briefing? These are becoming more and more important every day. Remind us how to be safe.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We're meeting here today on the third floor of the Noises County Courthouse, 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the courtroom past the Human Resources Office. Please note, there's a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom. There are also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an automated external defibrillator or AED is located on the atrium wall next to the Human Resources Office. In the event of emergency, the participant responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. In the event of evacuation, the egress route will be down the atrium stairs, exiting the LaPon Street entrance of the courthouse and assembling in the parking lot across the street. Should there be a need to shelter in place, court attendees will remain in the courtroom. And dependent upon the severity of the incident, the courtroom's double doors will be secured and remain so until given further instructions from the Noises County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our shared safety topic is for the month of coming up in the month of August is Children's Eye and Health and Safety Month. That concludes my safety brief.
Very good. At this time, I'll move to public comment. I have one person that signed up in the courtroom. We'll ask Connie to please search online. And if you are online and wish to make a public comment, all you have to do is raise your virtual icon of a hand. Okay, I'm going to sign, read the only one that I have signed up right now, which is Mr. Roger Powell. And welcome. Just to remind everybody on public comment, you've got your three minutes and you'll see that there's a clock, but I'm usually not a stickler for the exact second, sir. But we ask that you be mindful of it. And then, of course, while we don't really speak back to you at this time, trust me that we are very much listening and there might be an opportunity in an agenda item to further address your public comment.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for giving me, you know, a few minutes to talk to you. I'm back. I don't know if you remember me, but the same old thing. I saw in the news this morning that we're still going ahead with that dog park at Hazel Basemore Park. Judge, I'm, I'm just an old man and I'm not too smart, but something came up to me. The original plans for the dog park that was going to go in there was a little over 5,000 square feet. And the new dog park that you say that's going there is 40,355 for the same money. I don't understand that. I, what happened there? There's something fishy there. Another thing is $418,000 for a dog park? Judge, I know there's people over there that live in apartments and stuff like that that would like, they don't have a place to take their dogs and stuff like that. And if we're going to build a dog park, you can't build one for $20,000 or heck, $50,000. I, I know I could. I mean, all you're going to do is put a chain-linked fence around a piece of property and put a gate on it. You might put some water in there for the dogs and stuff and maybe some benches for somebody to sit, but that's not $418,000 worth. There are other items in Noises County that urgently need to be taken. Look at some of the county roads. There's some of the county roads in Noises County, you'd destroy your car if you're going down them. You know, another thing I was here for was the flooding issue in Northwest County. That's not been resolved totally. I haven't seen the machinery out doing anything to ditches other than over there on County Road 52A. Nobody's cleaned ditches on my road and I live on County Road 48. And basically, Your Honor, that's, I'm just, I just cannot see spending that kind of money for a dog park. And I'll again say that the people that I've seen with dogs at Hazel Basemore Park, they're all walking down by the river. You got, what, 60, 70 acres down there to let a dog run loose? It just, it just doesn't make sense. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Is there anybody else that didn't have the opportunity to sign up? Okay, I signed myself up this morning just to talk about, in my mind, a local hero. And I'm just signing up here because it wasn't noticed. I saw it on the news last night, but Rosie Torres and her husband Leroy Torres are crusaders for Burn Pitts 360 and the victims and veterans of Burn Pitts 360. Right now, right at this moment, it's an hour ahead in DC and Rosie's in front of the Capitol begging and pleading to make sure that a new vote is taken to make certain that our veterans have the benefits that they deserve, they've earned for their sacrifice and for our freedom. And I just want to say to you, Rosie, I am so proud that you belong to Noises County, that you have been fighting not only for your husband, for so many veterans. This actually goes not, PACT Act goes actually not to just address Burn Pitts 360, but basically certain Agent Orange diagnoses. So if you don't know about Burn Pitts 360, if you don't understand what this act would accomplish, I encourage all of you online, please Google Burn Pitts 360. Please understand that the lady leading the fight, and I think it's perfect that her name is Rosie, right? I just, if you think about our World War II, Rosie the Riveter and her, you know. Anyway, I just wanted to say, I know she can't hear me, but my hope is, is that you keep your thoughts and prayers for Rosie. She's out there with one other amazing woman who lost her son-in-law, John. She hails, hails from your precinct. And again, I, I wish I had known. I'm going to put it on the agenda so that we can have a resolution. And people say, well, that's a national issue. No, no, it's not. It's a veterans' issue. And Noises County has a Veterans Service Office. And every day, we see people dying in our own community that have been exposed to these toxic fumes. And it is our duty to make certain that we stand up for them. So here's to a local hero, Rosie Torres. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to our agenda. We've got, the first one, I think we're going to table this to August the 10th, is my understanding. This is the recognition of Ray Allen. He couldn't be with us this morning.
That's correct.
Could I have a motion, please, for the 10th?
So moved, Judge. He did contact our office and asked to be moved.
I'll second that. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion passes. Let's do the next one, which is the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association Rate Increase. It's a resolution in opposition. And we will turn to Belinda to read this. And then perhaps Commissioner Chesney and I can make some comments about yesterday's press conference. Belinda.
Yes, and the Windstorm Association is going to be meeting on August 2nd of next week to take a vote on this. And that's why this was so important that we get forward before y'all today. Whereas Hurricane Harvey made landfall as a Category 4 hurricane on the Texas coast on August 25th, 2017, causing catastrophic flooding through the coastal bend region, being the first major hurricane to make landfall along the middle Texas coast since Hurricane Celia in 1970. Whereas the Governor Greg Abbott first issued a disaster declaration on March 13th, 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas coastal residents and businesses are still attempting to recover from the economic distress caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, rebuilding after Hurricane Fart Harvey as well as facing rising inflation. Whereas there are sufficient premiums, assessments and reinsurance to cover potential TWEA liabilities for 2023. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Noises County, Texas, is hereby opposed to any windstorm insurance rate increase and requests that the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association vote no rate hikes for 2023.
So moved, Judge.
Second. Okay, we'll take Commissioner Hernandez's second. And any discussion, Commissioner Chesney? Yes?
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted to quickly, we've had, we've, and I don't want to, we've been doing this for so long and so many times, and I don't want to discount it in any way, but I know we're also trying to move forward. But we have to continue and as the comments that were made yesterday by many elected officials. For me, this is a fight for fairness. This is something that has to, has to change legislatively, or we're going to be doing this forever. As I said yesterday in my comments, I've literally been working on this issue one way, shape or form more, or more than half of my life, which is ridiculous. I went to work for Todd Hunter in 1988, running his campaign, and then was Chief of Staff in 1989. And that was one of the first things that we got involved in, in the legislature then. And it's just ridiculous that this continues to, to go on like this. There are other wind events in this state and those folks are not paying their fair share. And there has to be some fairness in this. I understand that it's costly, but the issue here is these hikes are discriminatory, these hikes are unfair to the coast because others who are also having wind events in the state are not paying in their fair share. And that has to change. And we have to keep fighting. And we can't get lazy or frustrated or this is just another round of it because it isn't. These rates are terrible. If we're going to continue to grow our community and do the things that we need to do, these hikes are unreal. I got several texts and Facebook messages from people yesterday after that press conference saying my, mine went up this high, mine went up this high. I mean, it's just, it's astounding what these rate hikes do and the effect that they have on, on the coastal bend. Again, do we have to have it to protect us? Of course we do. But until it's a, until the fairness comes into this, until this fight for fairness is won where everybody that is involved in wind issues participates, then this is never going to be fair and it's always going to be discriminatory to the coast. So I would hope that we would continue to fight hard and strong. And appreciate, as always, Representative Hunter taking the lead on this, but we had the city, the county, the state, Senator Colcorus was here, Senator Nahuza was online. It, it's, this is, as the judge said yesterday, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, but this is one issue that we are united on in this community and we are united on and, on this court, that we have to continue to fight because it affects all of us. And it's not just the coast. We all pay for this. We all are involved in this and it costs all of us. So, thank you, Judge.
Absolutely. And just to kind of give you a little bit of lay of the land, the meeting is on Galveston. So while you cannot maybe jump in the car and go to Galveston, you can jump on public comments, and that is publiccomment@twea.org. Is that correct, guys? Publiccomment@twea.org. You can just create a simple comment. Just say no to the tax rate hike. Another option is let us know and then we can help you get that message across. But this resolution today really does, I think, impact the board itself. And so you should know that out of committee a couple of weeks ago, the subcommittee already voted against the 5% rate hike at a margin of 5 to 2. So you see, we're already making an impact. So the purpose of the meeting is hopefully on, from our perspective, is to solidify the committee's recommendation. And of course, I'd like to see Commissioners on our legislative agenda, a complete makeup change of the board. I mean, you're right, Chesney, it's been, Commissioner Chesney, it's been since you were a young man, and that's been a long, long time ago.
Yes, it has.
And, and so I just want to say that, that, that we need to change the complexion of the board, which is within the leadership's power, right? You can't have a Republican governor, a Republican Senate, a Republican House and not tell me that you can't change that board to be fundamentally fair. So we're looking for more coastal representatives and less insurance interference. And so I think it can be done. And I think maybe we should be a little bold here in Noises County and we should find our way to a legislative agenda. I think that's a Chairman Hunter recommendation, to be honest with you. And we should step forward and do that because how many times do we have to come and say the same thing over and over again? Okay, with that, if there, are there any other comments? I know we're all so supportive. Would you like to make a comment, sir? I will assign, you don't have to sign up, actually. It's an agenda item. Mr. Powell?
Judge, while he's walking over there, and the real issue here on this is geography, too. I mean, it's, we don't have the, the, the numbers of legislators to do it. And so, you know, Harris County blocks this and Dallas County blocks this and makes it really tough. So it's, it's unfortunately on this one, there's a bipartisan effort to block it because you've got situations where they don't want to pay in Harris County and they don't want to pay. So you're right on most counts if you have the control, but when you've got, this is a bipartisan block effort, unfortunately, that makes it very sad that we can't get over this because I get nobody wants to pay additional, but I mean, Harris County has a strip, I believe, that pays into it and the vast majority doesn't. And yet they got hammered.
Hammered.
By Harvey. Hammered by, I mean, so it's just, like I say, it's a very unfair situation and we've got to keep fighting the fight on it. Sorry, sir. Go ahead.
You are 100% right. Believe it or not, Judge, that's where I'm going next. I'm going next to my insurance agent to fight over windstorm. And I'm a prime example. There are a lot of people in Noises County that are on fixed incomes. It's to the point right now, I'm almost to the point, I can't afford it anymore. So what do I do? Do I buy groceries? Do I put gas in my car? Do I spend outrageous prices on windstorm? And if I don't have it, if a hurricane blows in right now, I, I'm not covered now. I'm fighting it, I'm fighting it. And my house blows away, I'm, I'm screwed. That's the bottom line. So yes, y'all are 100% right. We need to do, fight it tooth and nail.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us that real, that real-life story because that's exactly how we feel about all our, all our residents. So Commissioners, all those, yes, sir?
No, no.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Okay, motion that, we'll get that if you don't mind, Belinda, to the delegation that is going to Galveston. And I, and we'll be online to, to read it. The next is H1, and this is a recognition, a certificate of recognition. And it's in recognition of the Noises County Historical Commission for the 2021 Distinguished Service Award. This is presented by the Texas Historical Commission for its active and well-balanced preservation program. This is an incredible honor and distinction, and Belinda will read for us.
Yes, Judge, as almost every year, or I think every year for the last many years, our Historical Commission has received this Distinguished Service Award, which is presented by the Texas Historical Commission in recognition of its active and well-balanced preservation program. And we have several representatives here to, to speak on that.
Wonderful. Kathy Wimmer, welcome. We'll adjust her mic, Belinda, for her.
Yes. The squeaky mic. Can you hear me?
Oh, very well.
Okay. I'll understand my tippy toes. Anyway, this is a great honor, but the numbers. Okay, there were 193 people, people, commissions that sent in their reports and forms for this award. 82 received one, and Noises County was among this, 82 to get one. And I think it's a great honor. It really is. There's a great deal of work that goes in to making history connections in Noises County. So we are very proud of this award. I want to introduce two Commissioners that are here today. Debbie Zuniga, Debbie, stand up, honey. Please.
Hi, Debbie.
She works with me quite often here in our heart, Debbie Zuniga. And my other one is Dr. Lori Turner. Okay. Thank you so much for y'all coming. I want to thank the Commissioners. This all would not work, especially when I'm talking about the markers. Robert Hernandez has helping us to replace the Cal Allen marker, and I appreciate it. I truly, truly do. After intense investigation to try to discover what happened to it, we still don't know. But it's going to be replaced.
That's great.
He was a mover and shaker here in South Texas. And Brett Chesney, talk about the hurricane. Four markers that were destroyed in Harvey, two have been replaced. I've already okayed the inscriptions on the other two coming. Now, when they'll be here, we don't know, but I'll let you know and we'd like to have y'all there. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Especially Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so.
Muchas gracias.
I want to, we're just so proud of, of our history here in Noises County. And if you don't mind, I'm going to make one more moment, as I say, a point of gratitude. Edward Arretta and his team, boy, we can't do it without them in the park system. And Juan's team, they basically go out there and help you place these markers. Isn't that correct?
I'm with them.
Yeah. So it's, it's a group effort and a lot of wonderful history to share. Kathy, congratulations to you and the whole commission.
Thank, could I have a picture?
We'd love a picture, absolutely.
I don't have that done.
Yeah, let's come forward and who can, somebody can take it for us?
I'll take it.
I, I know it might like being a little on here.
They only took a picture. Just.
Not everyone together.
They gave us a sheet.
I love your red powder fluid.
I'm doing a dress today. It's time for a friend. Thank you.
Back of my head will be the picture. It doesn't need to be any pictures.
Remember that. Actually, if I had better equipment, I could probably take a picture. Instead of all of them taking a picture with you. And then just send out massive emails.
Yes. Did you see? Oh, no, I need to forward you. You've got your laptop. Vega has a question.
All right. That's so nice. We're still waiting on one person for the judges, so I'm going to go on to the minutes. Try to. Judge Medary, we are still waiting, correct? Just confirming. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and Commissioner Modest was doing a quick photo. We'll, we'll hold here just for a second.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, okay, super-duper. I am right. He just wanted to do a photo, right?
I don't know where he did. I don't know. So Judge, let me ask you again. So are we going to go through the ones that are on the list and then at the end table the rest? Or do you want to just table the rest so the people don't?
Well, remember, there's an agenda item that says that we need to come up with a court date, and I have been told that August 4th is a good court date. So that way you know we're tabling to August 4th.
Okay.
Or not, or August 10th, right?
Okay.
You can stop, you can, you can, well, I don't want you to interrupt, but you can stop me at any time and ask clarity or question or?
No, go ahead. I was just asking, so you?
Yes, the judges asked me to do theirs first. If that's all right. Yes, sir. I'll make sure he not wait. He does not wait. Okay, so let's do, we are waiting on, I, I am very mindful of our judges' time, but we are waiting on one more person. So I'm going to move to accepting the following minutes. It's under J1.
So moved.
Thank you. It's July 6th and July 18th for the record.
Second.
Motion and a second. All the, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll do another one that I believe to be very quick, and that is under item K1. It is a very important commission. It's called the Noises County Civil Service Commission, and it's under K1. And let me move to that. Do we have a representative?
Judge, I think we're having to move to recommend reopening for applications. So I would make that motion.
I'll, I'll take that motion.
Second.
And I've got a second.
It was, I'm sorry, reopening for applications from July 29th to August 24th for the clerks' edification.
Correct.
Just a point of clarification, please. Are, what are we doing to help promote that? So when we get lack of applicants, I know the city does a pretty good job in promoting that. So are we doing anything on our social media or with our Public Information Officer? Maybe get that out? I know the news media from time to time looking for maybe a real quick item of interest. So maybe we can try to really push that.
We can do that. We can start promoting this.
This is one of the very most vital, essential commissions and appointments we have in the county in that there's no one interested. It's, you know.
They may not know.
They may not know. I think it's just people don't know.
Correct, so we start, we need to promote it a little bit more.
If we could just help promote it, yes, please. Thank you.
Through the public information system. Okay. And for anyone listening, Civil Service Commission is open. It's a wonderful way to serve. And of course, remember, your Civil Service Commission is there to protect your employees. So I agree with you. All right, well, all those in favor of reopening until? August 24th? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Okay, we are still waiting. So I'll move to Louis. And Louis Ray is here, Emergency Management Coordinator. And he's here to help the audience, the public and Commissioners understand our disaster preparedness and response. And of course, you know, we notice this in a way that we can talk about all the disasters that we are currently recovering from, which includes severe weather, flooding, drainage, economic recovery, COVID-19, ARPA, ERAP, et cetera. Welcome, Louis. Good morning.
Good morning, Court. Good morning, everybody. So Court, we'll be, this is going to be really quick. We don't have very much to put out this week. We're expecting to get some some people to come and give us some briefings on the outcome, updates on COVID-19 as well as monkeypox for our region. So hopefully that comes through for our next court, and we'll have that out. We're also going to prepare a, kind of like a paper, some things you need to look for that's going to be on our website for monkeypox, so it'll be a quick reference to you so you can see it. All right, so a quick weather update. We expect temperatures to be around 95 degrees. We expect some rain to come through either late Sunday night, early Monday morning, but it's hit or miss. Those showers may get us, may not. And we expect the heat index to be around 108 degrees. So usually we open the cooling centers if it's about 111 degrees for the heat index. So right now it's still on the day-to-day case of whether or not we're going to open up those cooling centers. The KBDI for this week, the high, the max was 678. And as of this week, we had a total number of 233 COVID-19 cases for Nuasis County. So as people are starting to go back to school, our children are going back to school. So make sure that you're being vigilant to yourselves and your families during this time.
Louis, on the KBDI index, I had asked you, and you provided, and I think what I'll do now is ask you to send it to the court administrator so everybody can see. The governor has declared, I mean, I can't see how many here, but it's just a huge amount of Texas counties in a state of, you know, emergency disaster declaration for drought, wherever there's what they call exceptional drought.
Yes, Judge.
It kind of looks, but I want you to confirm for me that our county is now in exceptional drought.
It is, Judge. So I will send that out today.
Could you?
We had an update from the Texas Wildlife, I mean, the Texas wildfire.
A wildfire.
I think that'll happen Thursday.
Yeah.
So I'll send that information out.
If you could, if you could, because what what's happening to for everybody is that when the governor, and I'm glad you you came back in, I was just saying, Commissioner Chesney, that that the governor has declared for many of the counties inside our COG, a issued a disaster declaration. And it just, it looks to me over 100 counties in Texas. I think we should, I need to get an accurate count. But I think our metrics are now inside of it. And so I think that you all should be prepared for TDM to be recommending to the governor that Nuasis be included. And when that happens, it might help us particularly if there ever were to be any kind of recovery on these cooling centers, because of course, when we staff up cooling centers consistently throughout the summer, there are expenses that are associated with it. So I just want you to know, our governor is definitely helping those counties that have those metrics. And I think we're inside one of them now. And we'll get that confirmation from Louis, and you guys will get it from his office.
Thank you, Judge. Any questions?
Any questions, guys, about drought, cooling centers? It's something good to also message. I'm proud that PIO has been messaging all our cooling center information. And by the way, they are, people always say, are they using them? You bet they are. Particularly in Driscoll and Banquete, they really are using our cooling centers. And Edward can speak to that. He's wonderful about giving us a, you know, an update. Edward, I don't know, I mean, I'm always thinking about, you know, how do we recover? How do we do things, you know, more efficient? If you have any thoughts, requests, comments, we'd love to hear them.
Well, we, one request that I got from Commissioner Jag was, okay, we used to have this box fan program. But the idea is, okay, we give them a box fan. So he asked us, can we do a survey? So just for your information, we did a survey, but anybody that came to the centers and asked them, if you had a box fan, would that keep you at home or would that keep you from coming to the cooling centers? So a majority, I would say 90% said, no. The box fan's nice, but they'd still come into the cooling centers because the, you know, with the heat, all you're doing is moving hot air.
Right.
Feels a little bit better, but the cooling centers are much better. And then we use them as an opportunity. I mean, that's the next part of the program. So if you've got people there for four or five hours a day, maybe we can do some education while we're there. So.
Or some fun.
Or some fun. We do fun, but maybe education would be the next, the next component of that. Why we got you there, here's what's going on, here's what we're doing, here's what we could, you know, so.
Well, I just, again, I wanted to point out and highlight, when we talk about inland parks, it may not connect with people, that it's our inland park staff that's always in the forefront of our crisis and our emergencies out in the field. And so I just want to say to to you, to slide, to the whole inland park staff, who do have one of the best, you know, Instagrams out there, that the work that they're doing is is vital for for our crisis operations. So thank you for that. And and again, I hope that that provided a little bit of awareness to the to the public. Be on alert for wildfires. Our, we're just so dry. We're just so very dry, and you see that happening all around Texas, and we need to also stay vigilant. The only other thing I wanted to say, Louis, since it is so hot, can you remind everybody about STEER and how they can sign up?
Yes, Judge. So we do have information on papers out here in the in the hallway, on the information board or the information table. Please take one. You can use your phone to download the QR code and register for STEER. So as a point of reminder, that STEER has a data dump that they do every year at June, in July. So if you, if you registered for STEER last year in 2021, you will have to register again for 2022. Also, I want people to be reminded that because you registered for STEER, that doesn't mean that the county is going to evacuate you in in times of emergencies. What it does is give us an idea where our medically fragile personnel is located. And if if there's a need for us to get to you, then we can get to you. And STEER is not only for just evacuation purposes for, I don't know, hurricanes, but as we have dry heat, we could have brownouts, blackouts as they come for so, some of our medically fragile personnel that need, I don't know, oxygen or need to have dialysis, need electricity to survive over a 24-hour period. This gives us an opportunity to make sure that you get the care that you need. So I encourage everyone who is medically fragile, make sure you register for STEER. We will set a new policy for ourselves for the emergency management. We will check our STEER information once a month. We'll probably do, we will do that on the first Monday of every month. And then if there's a if there's a hurricane that we think that's going to affect the Gulf, we'll probably do another check. Maybe about three days before the hurricane enters the Gulf. It gives us a chance to get updated information and find out what location those people are. As a last point of emphasis, Senate Bill 986 kind of mandates for that we make contact with our medically fragile personnel 24 hours after an event or during an event, but I would recommend that we do that as part of our recovery, response recovery, so it'll be after the event. So last thing, if you registered last year, you have to register again this year.
Thank you. I just think that's so important. You guys can, and we're going to have Tyler also help us message that. It's just so critical. Again, I mean, our job is to really focus on the whole population. But Louis and I and the rest of the emergency management team are really focused on our vulnerable population more so than ever. The only other recovery I think is worthy of mentioning is that we are now in what they call the Category C recovery period for winter weather, so that's super exciting. It means we're going to get $339,000 back from the government with regards to winter storm, and that represents over 90, over 90% of our recovery. And the Category Z is for all of the dollars that we expended on administration and and the recovery period from from those experts like Hagerty, who who helped navigate those FEMA waters for us. So I'm really pumped about winter weather recovery. And we are also on the road to doing the very same thing for COVID-19. We are getting really close to to recovery. So I'm excited to to say that those operations are going well in the recovery of of the dollars back to our community. Finally, there is a, you're going to hear about this, a court later today from from my office, is that there's a really important grant. It's $20,000. It's for the travel tourism industry. Think restaurants, bars, hotels, wineries, breweries, et cetera. And we're going to help folks apply for this. Of course, we're going to give them the information, and if if they want to apply online, they don't need our help. That's fantastic. This is from COVID-19 ARPA funds that the governor has. And my goal is to sign up as many small businesses. So when you see it, please, probably won't get a chance to to make it meaningful by the time we meet again. It's due by August the 7th. So when you get this from us in our office, do everything you can to encourage small businesses in your precinct to apply. And once again, I'm going to give details out on Monday. But if you don't feel comfortable applying online, we're going to help you right here in the courthouse. So that's coming from from Economic Development and in my office. And so I'm excited about taking advantage of the governor's very generous fund to help small business in that in that arena. Louis, thanks again, and we look forward to getting your info on drought.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Louis, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Are we still helping people get to the cooling places with transportation, those that need transportation?
So we have, and I need to give a huge hand and thank you to RTA for helping us do that. They do provide routes when we open up a cooling center. They've been gracious enough to drop people off. They just get on the bus and they get taken to the cooling center. In the, in the event that the RTA can't get to them, a lot of times they'll call in. Edwards has been gracious enough to send people out to pick people up as they need. So, I mean, we've never had an issue with people getting to the cooling centers, Commissioner. So I, that's just a big thank you to the people who are helping us do those cooling centers.
I spoke to some constituents on Monday, I believe it was. We had a wellness fair in Banquete, and they were very glad to for people going to go pick them up. They say they they turn off their AC, their window ACs during the day because they go to the cooling center, and then they turn them back on in the evening.
And it's a great.
They're very appreciative. Edward, thank you. Thank you, Louis.
Do so much good work for the people, so many unsung heroes, particularly our community center directors out there. Big, big shout out to them. Okay, we're going to move on, and I'm going to advance an item. And the item that I'm advancing is 3A2. 3A2, so I need you to look at your regular agenda to get there. And it's the discussion and consider approval of the bylaws for the Public Defender's Office. And today we have many people who have really been in the forefront of this on the judiciary side, as well as the criminal defense side and the committee. Judge John, otherwise known as Councilman John Martinez, with us today. Good morning.
Judge, just a quick question before I start. Is there a time-sensitive issue on this? This was one that Commissioner Gonzalez wanted to be here for, and he's ill. Is there some time sensitivity that needs to be done with bylaws? So just so we can, if we have to move forward, we can justify that. If there's not a time sensitivity, then I certainly don't want to have to hear something while one of the commissioners who's sick isn't here.
Well, good morning, Lisa Greenberg. I'll let you answer.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I believe there, the bylaws and the job posting and the acceptance of the letter are the time-sensitive issues, only because informing the Public Defender's Office, I believe that it has already been accepted. I just think the formality of the letter has to be signed. And then posting the chief public defender, the posting is important to get somebody to start looking for the right candidate, to start building and making some of these decisions. And so those items and the bylaws, I believe, were already approved by TIDC, who did this grant. And we would just ask for your approval on those. But I believe they're time-sensitive to try to meet the deadlines the grant has in place.
Thank you for the answer.
So for the for the position, but the bylaws also?
So I believe, it is my understanding that TIDC needs both of those, the the position and the bylaws to be approved to move forward.
And so if we have issues with the bylaws, we need to deal with those now because there are some questions I had on them and things that I don't?
So TIDC has already approved those bylaws. Is that correct, Ms. Greenberg? Yes, Judge. Right, and they are the ones that oversee the the bylaws?
But she just said we have to approve them. I'm not going to just blanket approve them without discussing them, and so I've got some questions on them, so.
Okay, no, no problem. Just trying to make sure that we know.
I heard it.
Sometimes things are ministerial. Sometimes, you know, it's, we have to look to the governing agency that understands these things. But let's do this. Why don't we hear your overview of them? And we've got Judge Madera here as well, and then we can call for, you know, discussion and questions. Fair enough?
Yes, Judge.
All right, so what, just let me just ask, what is the time sensitivity? Because I want to be very clear. What, when does this have to be absolutely done? Because again, this was something the commissioner asked to pull, and I'm not going to just go forward without like a specific. So what is the specific timeframe that this has to be complied with? Because we have another meeting upcoming, so.
So the grant came with deadlines. I'm not sure if you saw those. When we were originally here, TIDC sent us deadlines to accept the grant and move forward. And the first two matters that were supposed to be dealt with, well, the the letter accepting, I believe that's been approved already. But the the first two steps are the acceptance of the bylaws, which the Oversight Committee, some of the members are here today, worked hard on and then got them approved by TIDC. That's the first step, and then the posting. They're in tandem, the chief public defender position as well, to begin searching. Because some of the items that are going to come after that may be more, may require more discussion, we'll need a chief to help guide us with their vision. And so without that chief, without the start for the chief public defender, we're unable to see their vision and sort of make those decisions to meet the deadlines of the grant. And the grant had some specific deadlines from TIDC.
Right, that wasn't one that the judge, that the commissioner wanted to pull. I'm asking about the bylaws. What's the time sensitivity by by some rule or law? He hadn't, he didn't ask to pull the job posting. He just asked to pull the bylaws. So is, what's the sensitivity time on that? What, when does that have to be in by deadline? I don't have that letter. It wasn't in my packet this time. So is there some specific time that says by August 10th this has to be in? Because otherwise, I'd like to honor the commissioner's request.
Well, I didn't realize you were the county judge. You can make the motion. Hold on one second, but as a matter of process, I'm going to let you answer the question. But let's be clear, the way this is going to work is if you want to honor your friend's request.
Because he's sick.
Okay, but the law requires that we have a quorum only, of which we have. And I'm going to tell you that I'm going to call the question, or you can make a motion.
Can she just answer her question?
Time out. Time out. I'm going to get to you.
But you interrupted me. I was questioning Ms. Greenberg.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
She didn't get to answer. You interrupted me, accusing me of being the county judge by asking questions.
No.
So I would like Ms. Greenberg to answer a question before you go into your long tirade about it. So I would just like her to answer. Is there a time that these bylaws, no, the date specific that they have to be submitted? Yes or no? And if they are, tell me what that is.
So to answer that question, I just want to point out Amanda de la Serta, who has been working on this very diligently with Judge Madera and I, is on the Zoom. She is the one who has been dealing with TIDC. She is unfortunately down with COVID right now. So she's appearing by Zoom if it would be okay.
Sure.
We'll ask her to unmute.
I apologize.
And again, I just want to state for the record, the question was, is it time-sensitive? And you said yes. So as I say in court, this is asked and answered.
No, it's not, Judge. I asked what the date is, the time sensitive. It's asked and answered for your satisfaction, not for me, as a member of this court who gets to ask questions to my satisfaction. So it's not answered to my satisfaction.
Understood. Amanda de la Serta, we got you online.
If someone will just answer it.
Good morning and good afternoon. Sorry, by the way, sound this morning. In answer to your question, Commissioner Chesney, I believe moving forward with the bylaws today is very important. Any work to be done has to, first, we have to hire the chief defender. In support of that, the committee must make decisions in tandem with the chief public defender. In order to do that, the bylaws must be established by then. So in in essence, in moving forward with I'm sorry, with the acceptance of the letter and the bylaws and the job description, again, they all work together.
And the only other thing I was going to add to that is, so this committee, I think we were approved, but to have the bylaws helps us to pick that chief public defender?
And I stand corrected. I see where Commissioner Gonzalez did ask for that one to be pulled too, so I misstated a minute ago. So again, what I'm asking is, is there a, let me try it one more time because no one is giving me the answer. Is there a date when these things have to be submitted by? That is, it's a real simple question. That is, it's a real simple question that I just need an answer to. And if it, if there's no date specific, then tell me that. If there's a date specific, tell me that. If there's, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm hearing it needs to be done. I get it needs to be done, but I'm just asking, is there a date specific? It's a pretty simple question.
Is there something going on that, give us just a second? Hold on, Commissioner. We're gonna get the audio fixed. Oh, actually, it's not audio. Okay, please continue.
So originally, when we were um, given the letter of acceptance, it came with dates. And I want to tell you, I know those dates, the first two things were the um, the bylaws and the job posting. Oh, I think the very first thing was the letter of acceptance, to be honest with you. And then the second two things were to form that. I believe there was a date in the grant and I don't have.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yes, and I apologize. I thought, I didn't know that um.
If there's a date that says we have to do it by a certain date, that we can't come, then, then that makes a difference for me. That's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the questions. Um, I, I don't have the exact date, right? And that's what we're trying to pull right now. Um, but when we were just discussing it, we can't, if you want to, we can push the bylaws off, right? The biggest thing that we need is the letter of agreement signed and said, great, thank you TIDC for giving us all this free money in Oasis County. Uh, and then we need a chief public defender. Because what's happening is that I'm still on this and the committee needs to take over and they need to hire a chief public defender. Once they hire that chief public defender, then the whole system starts moving forward. Because we have a January 1 date of hopping in, moving into court and representing individuals. We have an October 1 date to hire the public defender. And it's being broadcast by TIDC, is being broadcast by the criminal defense, uh, the criminal defense area, all over the United States, so that we can get somebody in that we want to be able to move the system. So if you want to push those off, I mean, we can push them off. The chief public defenders, we can't post until you guys go great. So that's, if, if, if that's the only thing we can do and accept the letter of agreement today, that would be great.
I think the letter's already been accepted, Ms. Greenberg said, or is that not right?
Do we have it signed?
It, it was, it was brought up at the, at the commissioner's court. I just don't believe it was signed and so we were asked to do it again. I apologize.
I don't think that's on the agenda.
I think it was formally accepted.
I was gonna say, I think, I think it was already accepted. We'll make sure that you get, that's from a previous court. I think the real issue here is that if there are questions from those that are present here with regards to the bylaws, I think that you've got the three experts right now on the bylaws, plus additional members. Ask your question, sir. What is your question regarding the bylaws? We have a process in Texas and we've got to get things moving and going. And I'll be honest with you, this is not the first time that we've had delay on TIDC. I have a reasonableness standard in the way I conduct these proceedings and this is a reasonable request. We can do anything. We can postpone until infinity. But that is not in keeping with saying thank you to TIDC for the gift that they have given us in $7.4 million over the next five years. We need to get moving and going and the truth is, is that we have the ability to do so today. If for any reason, if for any reason, if for any reason, there is a concern or an issue with the bylaws, we can always come back to this court and address those bylaws. What we need to do is show action today. A week ago, we had this issue. Two weeks ago, we had this issue. I need to be able to, and again, it's your prerogative to not only ask questions, but be able to get the answers that you need. And it's my job to call the question or entertain a motion. And if you want to entertain a motion, I give you the floor, sir. Not now, but I will in just a moment. And you can make a motion to, to basically set us behind. Because that's all this is, is setting us behind. And if I thought there was an issue here that could not be addressed by all the good people that are here, then that would be one thing. But you have the resource in the room to answer any question. And there are four of us here who can help move this process along. And then again, if Commissioner Gonzalez, when he returns, he will not be here next week. We have already been told that. So I'm not willing to wait another week to do that, which is absolutely within our power to address here today. If you have a question, would you please pose it to this, to this ex, board of experts?
And I appreciate that. I don't agree with much of it. We haven't delayed anything in regards to this at this point. We've accepted the letter. This is the first time this has been before us. I have no problem moving forward with the, the job thing because what Judge Madera just said was, we could push the bylaws and that's not a big deal. So I appreciate you acknowledging that. And I have no problem, and, and I'll just take it up with Commissioner Gonzalez and say, look, you, because you gave me a date. That's what I'm looking for, is some dates. You said, these dates, we have to have this done. If we don't get this done, then we can't get this done. That helps me and I appreciate you answering that question, which was all I was trying to get, despite the judge's complete different rendition of the whole process. But I appreciate you answering the question. So I'm okay with moving forward on the F, whatever the, the position is, because there's date specific that are needed. If someone comes up with the date specific on the bylaws that have to happen, then just bring it back and we can consider that in 10 minutes. But I would suggest that based on what the judgment area is represented, let's hold on the bylaws if everybody's comfortable with it. If you're not, then that's okay, and I'll just.
Is there a motion? We're just on this item, just 3A, 3A2. We'll get to the next one in a minute.
I don't have a motion right now. I mean.
Is there a motion?
I'm just saying that the judge indicated we don't need to do the bylaws to that.
Again, is there a motion, sir? Is there a motion?
I, I'm not making a motion at this point.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws. Is there a second? All right, all those, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the bylaws, please signify by saying aye.
No.
Aye?
No.
Okay, so we've got 2-2, that's a push and um, so.
And I'll be happy as a, the member of the winning side technically to bring those bylaws back at the, the next regularly scheduled meeting so that we can do all that. And we'll get that, we'll get that taken care of then, when we, when we have that. And it, and again, if you, if you can come up with a date before we end this meeting, I'd be happy to even bring it back today. I just don't have a, a, a reason to push these bylaws, but I do have a reason to push your, your.
So is there any questions on the bylaws that you can?
I do, but we've already voted and she made a quick motion and we voted and now there's not an opportunity to do that.
So you want to be able to bring it back if I have TIDC come online and say when the bylaws should be on?
You don't even have to have TIDC, just tell me the date that there's, that needs to, that's all I need. You, you gave me the great date that moves me forward on the other one. I'm ready to move forward. I do have questions on the bylaws that I can ask you offline or whatever, since that motion is now off the floor.
And, and I did want to make myself available, Commissioner Chesney. This is John Martinez. Uh, for you, Commissioner Gonzalez, or any other commissioners, or the judges that would like to discuss them. I'm around all next week and pretty open, so um, if anybody would like to meet to discuss the bylaws, I, I am available.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about it. We'll get with you.
Yeah, so I can, I can um, I can move to, why don't you hold while we move to the next agenda, which will open up the opportunity to talk about the bylaws all over again because it's related and um.
I know, Judge, it's a specific item.
Anyway, I'll, I'll move, I'll, I'll move to the next agenda item. We've got Amanda de la Serta uh, up and we can always uh, move to, to reconsider here. Amanda?
This is F3, Judge?
Asked to unmute.
This is F3 you're calling, Judge?
Yes, F3.
Just for the record.
Um, yes, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, really quickly, I just want to add, um, Commissioner Chesney, the other push to get the bylaws accepted and approved today is the fact that the committee cannot meet um, and cannot hire a public defender without the bylaws accepted. We have to have the bylaws that govern the committee um, accepted in order to move forward with this. So in essence, if you delay the signing of the bylaws, we're also delaying the hiring of the chief defender.
You have to post the position and get a position posted and get it, it's gonna take two or three weeks to get someone interviewed, correct?
The committee cannot meet and discuss anything without the bylaws.
Okay.
Okay, so um, that's helpful.
Yeah, that would've been helpful before the motion, yeah.
Um, let me go.
Before the motion was rushed into, that would've been nice to know, so.
I, I.
Well, I mean, you made it and rushed it, so.
I'll, I'll ignore uh, the sidebar.
I'll be happy to reconsider based on that.
I'll take the motion to reconsider. I'll take the motion to reconsider, Commissioner.
You can, I think you can.
Based on the facts. Get a motion in a second. And uh, based on the information that Amanda de la Serta just provided.
And thank you Amanda for that information. That was very helpful also.
Yeah, thank you Amanda. You explained it very well.
Very well.
That's all we gotta try to get this information.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
So can I ask my questions on the bylaws now?
Yes, yes you may.
So my issue, I believe we addressed this at the last meeting, was on composition of oversight board was number one. I believe the court voted at that point to not have a member of the commissioner's court on that. And yet, this is in contradiction to what the commissioner's court voted for on that particular time. So that was my main issue on this one. Was, I think we, we made a vote then to, to not do that. And I, I don't, I don't, I don't think, and the majority of the court didn't think that that should happen. So this is in contradiction to that. So that's why, and if this, if this stays in there, that's why I would continue to vote against these, because that's, that's in opposition to what the court previously voted for. And one member of the court who is, who voted against that, isn't here to do that. So I would have to continue to vote against these unless that was taken out.
Um, I understand your concern, if I may answer that question.
Having full court with a, you know, that's.
Yes, Commissioner, I understand what you're saying. So these bylaws, what we actually did on them is we actually took the TIDC um, language that they use in all the other counties with this grant. The um, what we understood was the 11 people approved would stay the way they were. So these positions come up and, and, and we did the things such as pick the chair, I'm the chair. And then um, Councilman Martinez is the vice chair and Dr. Owens is the secretary. Um, we did those things to follow that. And then we have the other members of the board and so there are no open positions. But from what I understand, if in the future, the, um, so the bylaws would stay the way they are until these members drop off. So there's a three year and a two year limit on those. I don't know if you see those. So that the, the um, officers pick, stay on for three years and the rest of the members stay on for two. If in the future, a council member wanted to be part of it, that's what that language would be open for. Um, so that's why that, it's sort of boilerplate language. But as I understand it now, the 11 members that you all approved are the 11 members of the board.
But I think the intent was also that the majority of the court at that point voted that that was not the direction we wanted to go. So if it's in the bylaws, then that would be contradictory. So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, like, you know, my, my thought was maybe if, if, because we don't, I, I just don't like the concept of any member of the commissioner's court serving on boards. And we don't have too many of those situations. In fact, I'd like to get rid of all the ones we have. I'd like to have no commissioners or judge, no member of the court on any of the boards that we appoint. I think it's, it's inherently contradictory. It gives one member of the court more say than it does the other. So I'd like to go and do this across the board and I may look at doing something like that, just taking any board that we're on. Now, that's a little broad statement. I don't, I haven't looked at it yet. But on this one, I, the, you know, that was where we were going, so. You know, you could put the county manager in there, or county manager or his or her designee, if, if there's a real feeling of need. Because that person uh, is, is a person that reports to the entire commissioner's court and represents the entire commissioner's court and is supposed to represent the court's views. So I'd certainly be more comfortable with that being a slot. But because this is in here, it puts me in a bad spot. Because, you know, I have, I, I, the, at the time, will the court was not to do this and yet it's, it's in here. So I don't know what to do. You know, I mean, I can either continue to vote no and screw up the bylaws or get someone to make an amendment that would say, let's put the county manager in there as a representative and we all agree to that.
Could, could we do that, um, given that you don't have a by, in other words, the, the working group created the bylaws? Is, you know, typically, working groups also work on a democratic basis. Do you represent the working group so with that amendment could be, do you feel comfortable allowing that change so that we could vote on the bylaws?
That would be great.
Actually, I do. Um, what I understood was to leave, what I tried to do to address your question is, I tried to leave the language open in case in the future, that was a change that would be needed to make. So this is, we know this board is a three and two year board. But if we want to amend that to get the bylaws passed and it could be amended in the future, if somebody would like to be part of that, then I think that's fine and we have no problem with that.
Okay.
And Judge, I would just, if, if that's acceptable, I would just make the amendment to um, say instead of one member of the commissioner's court that uh, a, the, the county manager and or.
Or designee.
His or her staff designee would be filled that slot. Is that clear?
That's very clear. Only thing I need you to add to the motion is that you, your motion is to pass the bylaws with that amendment.
Well, I've got one other question, but.
Go ahead.
If I, can I, I'd like to make that amendment on this one and then I've got one other question down low and then I think, and I'm done.
Do you want to, uh, we'll hold then on that motion until you ask your second question?
So, okay, if that's what you're.
In case it yields another chain.
Yes, ma'am. No, well, I don't know that it does. It's just more clarification, but that's fine.
Okay, he's got another question.
Board member terms of office, office vacancy and member positions may be filled by Oasis County or other entities subject to the commissioner's court approval. I don't know what that means.
Well, and, and to be honest, we use the TIDC language. But what I believe that means would be anybody from, such as a mental health, in the future, if we have a mental health court, if we have somebody that runs something with mental health that we feel is on point with this, with this commission, um, and somebody you all designate. So that is why that language is in there. It's, um, if you don't like it, we could take it out again and amend it.
Um, I just don't know where that would fit because to me, to me, this court is very interested in, in what y'all are doing. And we made a huge commitment. And I can't see a time where this court, no matter if any of us are on it, would not want to be the appointing agency to the board because this is super important and, and this is super awesome. So I would just like to take those words out because I, I'm not trying, I just don't know who that would be. But I just want this court to always be super involved with this because this is way too important stuff not to be involved in from a commissioner's standpoint.
So we want to make sure that the court is super involved, but not on the committee. I just want to make sure.
Absolutely.
Super involved, but not on the committee.
Absolutely.
Okay, just had to like, make sure that that was processing.
Do you want to say it again so you can, and I'll say yes again.
I think, I think the audience got it.
I think they did too. No contradiction if there's people that have undue influence on this board. This board should act independently and this board should have no oversight uh, from the standpoint of, we're, we appoint good board members and we should let them do their jobs. And there shouldn't be any member of the court that has undue influence over you and shouldn't be on the board. So I think that's completely two different things. So if you want to keep debating that, we can. But uh, or you, if you want to just get this done in an efficient manner, I'm, I'm happy to do that too.
I like your definition of efficiency. Is that your motion? Let's go ahead and get our motion out. I don't think that uh, it would be bad to amend it again.
Sure, I'll amend that first motion, Lorenzo, to just include taking out or other entities subject to commissioner's court approval.
Okay.
That, so that would, the first part of the motion and then add that, is that, do I need to restate or you?
Lorenzo?
I know, I was a little.
So the first, the first amendment, go ahead and why don't you repeat it?
Let me repeat it. So the, the amendment would be to amend the um, bylaws to indicate that the county manager and or her, his or her designee, staff designee, would take the number one, the spot of the commissioner's court, number one. And we would amend and take out or other entities subject to the commissioner's court approval. That would be the motion, Judge.
Right, we've got a motion in a second. And all those in favor of passing the bylaws for TIDC's uh, committee, oversight committee with those amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Uh, Judge, committee, you have your bylaws. And now we begin the process of uh, really transformational change when it comes to public defense and, and mental health cases.
I, I'm so sorry. I just, I wanted to make sure, did the chief public defender um, position, did we?
That's another op.
Oh, I apologize.
No worries, it, just taking one at a time. Okay, so now we'll move to.
Thank you.
To the next uh, item, which on my agenda is?
F3, Judge, I think.
F, it's under HR, right?
F3, yes ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, so if everybody will turn to the human resources pe, uh, piece of this, you've got item number three. It's discussed and consider creating a chief public defender office. It will come in as a pay group 47 for the public defender office pursuant to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission grant. This will allow us to get this position posted. Please remember and recall that the first year is a 100% uh, grant, if you will, um, allocation from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission as a result of ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding. Not our ARPA, their ARPA. That always got confused in sometimes the way we post. Uh, is there um, any background here that you guys would like to give us? Or is, do you all feel comfortable uh, in the way it's written?
Just a question on, if you can just tell us how you got to the, the salary level so that we can, again, justify to the constituency why we're paying what we're paying.
Yes, Commissioner. So the salary le, level was um, as close as, I guess, our local county could get to the pay group that is acceptable to TIDC. So TIDC sets the pay group, but we have to kind of put it into, what I understand, Oasis County terms. So the, and I just wanted to comment that the word chief might throw some people off because we have chiefs in the DA's office, but they're not the same as the DA who runs the office. The chief public defender will be the person who runs the office, who hires, who supervises staff, who makes the vision of the office. So it is more comparable to a DA. This pay that we have is a little bit less than the DA, but it, it is a little bit less than other counties. But it was acceptable to TIDC and to our pay groups. And so that's how we came up with that, with that pay number. Um, but TIDC actually um, approved that number for our county after the study.
And Commissioner, not, not only is it approved by, by the TIDC, um, but it's also something that's competitive within the market. As you guys know, it's a very tight legal market right now. Um, I know that you hear from the DA all the time how they can't fill positions. It's the same thing with the city. The city attorney's office is having a hard time filling positions as well. And something at this range. And something at this range would be something that would bring in good candidates to fill this position, and it is in line with a lot of the more senior attorney positions, at least with the city, and I think with the, with the county as well.
Appreciate that. Judge, I would, again, based on the timeliness of this, and obviously with respect to Commissioner Gonzalez, but I think the timeliness has been explained, and once again, that all the information has been given, it's been a lot easier to dig through. So I appreciate all of you answering my questions. And again, to Amanda, thank you for clearing up what she cleared up, made a big difference. And so I would move acceptance of this, Judge.
I'll second. All those, any other further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. And I would ask the Oversight Committee to work with Julie Guerra and her office for expediency, and she's, she's online, but she's right down the hall. And we hope that you will come back and give us a report that you've hired an amazing new chief public defender.
Thank you, Judge.
Please stay, if you would, Judge Medary, we have one more item to address.
It's a great day for us. Would it be okay if we got a picture?
You know what? I think it, I think that would be very nice.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll hold for our official Oasis County photographer. That would be anybody holding a camera.
Whoever that might be, yeah.
We're not like the city, John. We don't walk around with entourages or paparazzi.
I would have brought him, but we had another event going on.
Y'all have some professional, awesome cameras.
Oh, okay, thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, they've got some beautiful cameras.
It is a great day.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Thank you for your work.
We appreciate all y'all doing this.
I was gonna do a handshake, but then we're all doing, how you doing? Good to see you.
See, I wanted to do a handshake, but then Frank started with this box.
Yeah, everybody follow.
Oh, okay.
One, two, three.
I got a lot of fans.
Good God.
Yeah, I guess she's it now.
I'm the official.
I was gonna say, we're paying, we're gonna pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she can do all three with one hand.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all so much.
John, take care, ma'am.
You know what?
That's my bag, but look, it's just...
Can you guys wait out, or inside or outside, but for me, just so we can check? I gotta do the auxiliary.
But on the third gap, then you're good, right?
Okay. Judge Medary, we've got one more, and I'd like to go ahead and take it out of order just to respect your time, and that's F4. F4 has to deal with a different subject matter, but also an important grant that we got from OCA, also ARPA-related, but not our ARPA, their ARPA. And this has to do with our auxiliary court. So this item, for the record and the clerk, is discuss and consider the four positions. And here they are. It's a felony six, a certified bailiff, an assistant court clerk, an administrative assistant, and all of this is funded not by our Oasis County ARPA funds, but by the Office of Court Administration for ARPA, not for ARPA, with ARPA. And again, would you mind just setting the table a little bit about the importance of getting these positions posted?
Sure, sure. So for those listening online, this was a grant that, that we applied for. Amanda de la Serta and I wrote this to apply to the Office of Court Administration for a grant for an auxiliary court in order to have a visiting judge, in other words, to have another court working on our backlog. We were given this grant, and we, it's a little over $900,000. And what we would do is be able to set up an auxiliary court on the fifth floor. We've already started to look at the fifth floor or where we would be. You would have a visiting judge that would be assigned by the Fifth Region, in my role as Fifth Region, and then that judge would be assigned for six months so that we'd have continuity. We'd also have a district clerk that is being hired by Ann Lorenson, being paid for by the grant. Also, a bailiff that is going to be hired by the Auxiliary Court Committee, which is myself, Judge Hassett, and Judge Carlos Valdez as our local administrative district judge. And we will be able to hire the bailiff. And then the other individual would be a secretary, or I can't remember how we've, we've named them in there, but is the individual that, you know, would basically run the court like our court managers, like our Amandas and our Andrews.
So again, I'm gonna ask, because this is just one that Commissioner Gonzalez asked, is there timeliness on this one? Sorry, just asking.
Well, I mean, no. Do I have a date that says absolutely? Yeah, I mean, yeah, I do. I have October 1st. October 1st is when this judge will be assigned, and that judge will start and have a trial on, I think it's October 3rd. So, you know, the thing you guys removed off this was the build-out, right? Which is really kind of the most important thing that we have to also talk about, but we can talk about it later on, because it's not on your agenda. But what we have to do, Commissioner, is we have to, you know, the visiting judge is going to be my responsibility, right? So that's not really a time thing, except I just got to get one appointed. But in order for the district clerk to put out and get somebody to come in and do this, in order for the bailiff to come in and get something done on this, as well as the administrative secretary, we'd like to be able to get that done as quickly as we can. You know, I don't, you know, so Commissioner, is there an absolute drop-dead date? Well, I, sure, I guess October 1st, but I don't know how we can scramble and hire and do all that by October 1st if October 3rd, they're supposed to be doing a murder trial. And so that's why, you know, if you've got questions about it, about anything that we've written on there, I'm willing to answer it.
I am gonna answer questions. I'm just asking for, I mean, he asked, we got an email saying, you know, to do it. I'm asking, I'm just being respectful of a, like I would hope someone would do for me if I was sick and not here. So I'm just doing the same thing, Judge. So I have some, I do have some questions, and my questions are based on, so this is a grant, right?
Correct.
When the grant goes away, this goes away?
Yep.
I mean, so this is just as long as it lasts? Because I think it's important for constituents, again, to know, we're not creating...
I agree.
We're not circumventing the legislature and creating...
Well, you know what I hope, Commissioner, is I hope it doesn't go away, right? And I'll tell you what, this is what we hope to show with, and we've been working on the statistics. We have a baseline statistic on how many in jail over a year, how many in jail over 100 days. We've been working on those statistics. So what we hope to show through this is, at the end of the two years, what we hope you guys do is beg us, right, and say, hey, can we keep this going? And we'll pay for it, because, boy, did we save so much money with inmates being in jail? Boy, did we save so much money with mental health issues and being able to transfer them somewhere else. So that's what we want. So if it doesn't work, or if it works and the Commissioners' Court doesn't want to approve it, right, then it goes away. But if not, I hope that you guys do approve it one day and move forward. So right now, what you're accepting, Commissioner Chesney, is, once again, free money from OCA to be able to help this county with its backlog. At the end of the two-year period, it doesn't, not one penny is going to come out of Oasis County.
And so it's a two-year grant?
Correct.
And what we're doing today is a felony six, I gotta get my Roman numerals right there, a felony six, what is that, a ju, what is, tell me what that is.
A felony six?
Is that a pay, I guess that's a pay group?
Yeah. Felony six is a pay group six for the assistant DAs, basically, and so we're, we're getting a prosecutor that can handle violent crimes, right? You're not going to send a misdemeanor person into, in the court that's going to be doing homicides.
Right. And then a certified bailiff, and then administrative assistant, and assistant court clerk, and then you will, and so there will be some costs, because I guess we'll have, well, no, I shouldn't say that. Do we, so that grant covers the visiting judge also?
The Fifth Region budget covers the visiting judge.
Perfect. And that's just super important to, like, this is, I mean, I think this is really cool, and I appreciate you doing this, but I think it's also confusing sometimes if we don't explain for the three people that are watching on Friday morning, you know?
Right, and I'm happy, yeah.
But, you know, just to say, this is a grant, this is, and grants are still taxpayer dollars, but it's not coming out of Oasis County coffers, and you've gotten that money from, from Grant. And honestly, Judge, if you need a second job as a grant administrator, a grant writer, because you, you know, what you've been able to do is unbelievable with the...
I'd give it to Amanda de la Serta, because she's amazing.
Amanda, too.
But thank you.
And thank you, and Amanda, too. Y'all have done an amazing job on this, so, I, I mean, I'm, I'm good with this. I just, again, I just ask questions sometimes to get the information out there, and not in any other way to, to do, to do that, and I think you've helped get that information. And when those questions get answered as succinctly as you do, it's, it's really helpful, and it kind of gets away from all the other, you know, sometimes the noise that we hear out there. So thank you very much, and I, I think this is great.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve in your dialogue?
Yes, sure.
I'll second. I'll second. Thank you. I'll call on you next, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Judge.
Judge, I just want to double-check. That's all I have on my agenda? Would there be any others?
The letter of agreement, that, just make sure that we get that copy as well.
Right. I believe that already transpired. Iday, I'm just gonna have to look to you to make certain that it, when it, when we approved it last time, that it probably went to clerk's office, and I just need to, can we just dig it up?
Yeah, that's fine. If you guys just, Iday, if you can get that to us to make sure.
Help me out. Hold on, Iday is pointing out something. It's on consent.
Consent agenda.
It's on consent.
Yes.
Okay. Never mind. Okay, so if you wouldn't mind, give us just one more moment, and I'll move straight to the, oh, well, gosh. Judge, I, Govind, I, I did promise, but...
That's fine.
I hate to say it, but she outranks you, sir.
I, I...
I'm very sorry, sir. I always keep my word.
Judge, she outranks all of us, I'm good.
She can outrank me anytime.
That's fine, Govind, I appreciate you. Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna move to the consent agenda and ask that we approve the consent agenda items A through, give me a second, V as in Victor, A through V as in Victor, and, yes, sir.
I'm gonna pull item J and K.
You got them, J and K. All right. Will they be ready next time? Contract wise?
Sure, I think we, we need to get some, all of it reviewed by legal, or I think on the City of Robson item, they have to review it internally, I'm not sure on that.
Would you like to table it to the fourth or the 10th?
Let's say the 10th.
The 10th, all right. We'll just say the 10th at this moment.
Motion to move item J to the August 10th.
The 10th. And also K to the 10th.
Yes.
All right, it gives a little more time to the county attorney. And Jenny, do you, is that also acceptable to you?
The 10th is good, or...
Yes, we have the same request.
All right. I'll, I'll, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I heard multiples, whoever you want to take in. I thought, heard Chesney first.
Doesn't matter, Judge.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, how about the rest, A through V?
Hang on one second, Judge.
Excluding J and K.
Give me one second.
All right.
I apologize, I'm trying to... I think it was V, Judge.
Yes, correct. Commissioner Gonzalez requested B.
V, V as in Victor.
Yeah.
That's from the county attorney.
V as in Victor?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, V as in Victor. We'll go to executive session anyway. Okay? I'll pull V, just for executive, and we can deal with it at that time.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion then to approve the rest?
So moved.
I'll second. Got a second with Hernandez? He's been waiting to do a second? I'm gonna take his.
We just met each other.
No, I know, I'm just saying I'll take yours. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Judge Medary, I can, I will pull, the consent agenda has passed with your item in it, I'm gonna ask load answer to pull it, let me sign it, and I'm gonna give it right back so that you can try to get that in an hour or less, okay?
Thank you.
We'll run it up to Amanda, well, no, we can't run it to Amanda. By the way, Amanda, your hand was up. Have we satisfied? Was there any extra information that you needed? I saw that, I think we've gotten...
No, ma'am, Judge Medary did give you the extra information I was gonna provide for Commissioner Chesney.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much, everyone, I do appreciate that.
Please, please feel better soon.
Hope you feel better.
You didn't get it?
I'm gonna look.
Okay. I don't have it here at this moment to sign. The point is, it's...
I'll be on the eighth floor.
Okay, eighth floor.
Y'all know where to find me.
All right.
I'll be back in the 3:47.
The point is, it's done, okay?
All right, thank you all very much, Commissioner and Judge.
Absolutely. So having moved past the consent agenda, except for those items that you already know about, what I'm gonna do is advance another item, which is to receive information, I believe it's gonna be...
Which one?
A8, A8, 3A8. It's to receive a presentation from Govind regarding the proposed design for the Hazel Bazemore Dog Park, and Govind is here, and so we'd ask him to join us. Thanks for waiting patiently. And I don't know if you need anything on the screen, but you can tell Connie.
It's coming in.
Give us a second to set up.
Not a problem.
It's 3A8. It's 3A8.
And is this, this is just presentation today, Judge? Correct? This the way I wrote it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have it also in your written form here. Okay. You already got it.
Yes, ma'am.
This is what we're looking at, audience. All right, Govind, we're going to follow along and let you take the lead here on this presentation.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. You have the presentation item in front of you, but also I had sent out the, or the complete set of drawings last week. I think Edward had it, and I think he had given it to you all. That shows that we are almost 90 to 95 percent complete on the project. There are few items left that we are working with park director Edward and his staff. And so, once we have some of those things finalized, we will be 100 percent ready. At this stage, we are looking at September timeline to go for beards. There are a few items, well, let me back up. We took the inventory of all the items that's out in possession of inland park department, and there are a few items that we have some extra. And working with park director, we figured that it's better for him to buy some of those missing items that we need. That way, we don't have to have part of which is 10 to 20 percent of the items that we need in the dog park, that general contractor to buy it, rather than it will be all bought by, by park inland, inland park department. And that way, it makes it very clear and simple that it will be the owner supplied items, and then the contractor has to install it. Makes it very simple on that aspect. Saying that, you know, I'm going to start what you see up there. I'll go very quick because I have done part of this before. This is just information type presentation. You know, there is a, will be a question answered at the end, but during, I'm going forward. If there is any other question comes up, you can stop me and ask me at any time. Okay? The dog park is going to be at the, at the existing Hazel Basemore Park. This slide shows
Just let it know if you want to
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thank you. This one shows the comparison of previously selected dog park, the old location versus the new location. It is right across the, the street from each other. As you can see, it is almost from 5,000 square foot to 40,000 square feet. Next. The, this one shows the scope of the, of the project. It, it has a 40,000 square foot of total fenced area. Within that fenced area, there is about 10,000 square foot, 14,000 square foot of the ADA compliance area, which is also fenced. So, it stays separately. The, the ADA portion will have its own ramp and the gates, so they can go in and out without being disturbed by the other areas. The, their six-foot chain link fangs will be completely surrounded, so dogs can roam around within the fenced area, but then come back to the, to the owners. There will be two shaded structure areas, one in the, not, the ADA area and one in the general area. There'll be sitting benches in both the areas. There are the hydration stations for the dogs in both areas. So, there's a lot of commonness in that. One other thing that we have in here is the equipment gate in the general area, if I call that general area, because to maintain a bigger proportion. Majority of the ADA compliance area will have the astroturf or the, or the, or the thing, so it will be more flatter and, and will comply fully for the ADA area. Next. This, this slide shows the general layout of the com, complete area showing where the, where the location of the, of the, the gazebos are, the, the pond is, the, the, the hydration stations are, the leash stations are, the benches are, the hoop stations where, hoop locations where the dogs can jump over, the sandboxes where the dog can run in the sandbox, and so forth. Next one. Next few slides are going to show the amenities, what we are going to put it in there. The, the hydration, the fountain, which is the dogs can go and drink and all so forth. The, the metal structure, I'm showing a metal structure because that was originally was, I have to change that because now we have changed it to me, mix and match with the park across the street, which has all the wooden structure. So, we have designed the gazebo as a wooden structure with the help of Edward, who said that it's better to have the wooden structure rather than the metal structure. Next one. This is the dog walk and, and the, and the waste, pet waste system. That's where you, you have those bags and so forth, so the owners can, can use them if, if the dog decides to do the natural thing. Next one. The, the benches, the, the park side benches, type benches, is, is, will be, there will be two of those, and they will be underneath the gazebos. And, and there will be six benches, regular benches for, for the users to see while the dogs may be running around, or they would tie to the leash poles, their dogs to the leash poles. The, there are two welcome signs that will be put on the, the two main entrances, one on the ADA compliance area entrance, and one at the, at the regular entrance. Those two signs are already in, in park director's possession. We will, we will get the contractor to install them. And we will have six pet leash poles area where, where the dog owners can tie their, their dogs to these leash pole areas. They will be more close to where the benches are. And one other thing that I want to mention to you guys, that with the, with the help of director, we are going to have the, underneath the bench and this leash pole area, we will have a astroturf. So, that way, the dogs can have a more pleasant place to, to see. Next. It's a general layout of the pond. It will be in, in-ground pond. This pond location is to the lowest spot in that whole total 40,000 square feet. So, if the rain and all that happens, the water will drain in there. If there is any water needed, we are going to have the water line for the, for the dog drinking fountain area. We will have a, a surplus line going up there, just in case we need to go fill it up. Trash receptacles. Next one. The, the dog hurdle jumping rings, we're going to have eight locations, four, six in the, in the big area and two in the, in the ADA compliance area. This is where the dogs like to go jump through the hoops and have their exercises and so forth. And, and the thermal plastic trash cans, this is the cover that, that cans will go inside. This is the fence that we were originally thinking about to match with the wooden, but then it came to the thing that, you know, for the dogs and so forth, it's better to have a, a chain link, six-foot chain link fangs. We are going to have a bottom bar, so dogs cannot crawl underneath the thing, and it will be right at the ground level. And then so, the cha, that, that look, that picture will change. The sandbox, I saw this sandbox type thing at the, at the Sugarland Dog Park. They have a two-and-a-half acre, closer to, two-and-a-half acre, and they have several sandbox. And I liked it, I saw it, and I said, we can add this amenity into, so we added two of these, one in a general area and one in a ADA compliance area. Next one. These are some pictures that we took, which is the amenities which are already available in the inventory at the inland park storage area. Some of the thing shows the carpet and the glue for the carpet, the trash cans, the welcome signs, the, the polish, the ju, hoop jumps, and so forth. Next one. I, I'm not going to go through details. This is the one which shows how much we have in inventory, and it shows also what we may need to get some extra that, that park director will have to buy.
Got it.
Next one. At this stage, we are still very comfortable stating that the estimate will be within the $400,000 budget that was given to us, including, you know, even by putting extra amenities and a bigger areas and so forth. Next one. Just shows the, the timeline. You know, we didn't put the dates, but right now, as soon as we finalize, when we will get those other items that, that park director will be ordering, once we have that solidified, then we will have set the, the bidding date and the, and the bid receiving date and award date. Looks like it probably, it will be September that we are thinking that we'll go out for dates. Next. Questions?
A couple of questions. There are some amenities that are currently in situ in Hazel Basemore Park right now. Two water fountains. I just want to make sure kind of for everybody and to clear the record there. We intend to move those two water fountains to this new location. Is that correct?
That is absolutely right.
I mean, that's if the court, you know, obviously
That
approves the design. I'm not trying to get ahead, but, but that's the plan.
The four items that I know of, and, and director can correct me, there are two shared structures, steel shared structures.
Yes.
And the two do, water fountains.
Correct.
What's called pet fountains. Those four items are already installed.
Correct.
Originally, we were planning to see whether all four items we can move on the other side. Director's request was those shared structures already installed, the concrete pad is already there. If you take the structures out, there will be pad, what I'm going to do with it, and I agree with him, that those shared structures staying there and we using the matching wooden structure up there would be all
On the other side.
The new, new location. Would be a lot better to do that, but we would still request to move the two water fountain, dog, dog water fountain. And he said, I don't need it up there. Yeah, we can move that and do that. So, yes, your question is correct, or what your statement is correct, that we will be moving those two drinking fountains, pet drinking fountains into the new location.
And I'm just curious, because I want to make sure, do you agree
Oh, yes.
With, with those, with the, the movement of those two fountains and the keeping of the two shade structures there?
Yes, Judge, we've all been communicating.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. And then, this is the harder one. I kind of knew that one would be the easier one. Here's the harder one. And I'm cur, I'd like to know what, what the recommendation is, and then, of course, make sure that there's concurrence. So, the harder one is that there's already, and I'm, I'm using my hands here because that's how I see it in my mind, is that there is a concrete berm, if you will, or a small lip of concrete that's been set. Is it your recommendation to leave and maybe utilize it in some other way, or remove that given our new site location? And I know that's a harder one, and even if you don't want to answer it today, I'm just trying to get us a little further
I, I will, I will hypothetically answer it.
All right.
If I, as a professional engineer, if I know what would be the future use of that area, then I can tell you whether that berm is useful or non-useful.
Understood.
If, if, if that thing is just going to be utilized to keep it some reason, I had heard, and I'm just hypotheti, I'm going to go again hypothetically, I had heard the splash pad and so forth.
Got it. So
If you go fill up that properly, and if you go, if you go take certain areas, dig out and find out how much deep it is, to support the slab, that splash pad slab going in there, whether that berm is good enough, strong enough, and capable enough to support that load, then you can use it. Otherwise, it will be very hazardous, and my recommendation at that point would be to remove it.
Understood. And I'm going to have Edwards behind you. I guess he's gonna, is that going to be your recommendation? And then I'm going to ask Commissioner Hernandez if he supports that. Is that the best use of it, to not lose those dollars?
That, um, yes, Judge. Essentially, what we may do, and again, it's like Govind says, we're looking at that location as a splash pad
Got it.
Because what's going to happen is those two shade structures are going to be perfect for mom and dad to be sitting there, because the kids aren't just going to be going in the water. They're going to run to our new playground, our ADA compliant playground equipment. And so, they're going to be just running back and forth. So, this is a very prime spot for parents to watch their kids, if they have multiple kids. One may be in the, in the splash pad, one may be playing on the playground equipment, and then they just move back and forth. So, that's why that place is actually an optimal place for our new splash pad that we're getting ready to
Okay. And I'm going to have a follow-up question, but first, okay?
But, but let me, let me clarify again.
Sure. It's got to meet the load.
It got to meet
I'm with you.
The requirement, and somebody needs to do the investigation
Well
to make sure
That's
that that concrete curb, if I call it curb, is capable enough to comply all the requirements.
Right. So, that was going to be my follow-up question, is, and it's really, it's going to be more to you, Edward, and then also to Commissioner Hernandez, is that, to me, we're in this situation where it either becomes unuseful and a hazard and has to be destroyed, and that means money wasted, or we figure out if it can support something more wonderful like a park amenity for families. And my question to you is, it seems to me that we should at least undertake that investigation because it's either a loss, or we figure it out. And I'm wondering if Govind's contract could expand to do that, because I'll be honest with you, I, this is what I've been waiting on, and I, I'd like to hear Commissioner Hernandez, see if he concurs with that. We've got to figure out if we're going to get rid of it, or if it can be useful. And if it can be useful, that's awesome, but we got to know that, and we don't have anybody to do that unless we, unless we authorize that.
Judge, we've been looking at, at that curb, and it's, to me, in my opinion, I'm not a contractor or anything, but I've been around construction, and the way I see it, it's very weak. It's breaking up already. I've asked Mr. Pimentel, our county engineer, to advise me on that, and maybe he can uh
Okay. Well, what is your advice to the court on this issue? On just the issue of, of what to do here? Because we need to, it, it affects another issue later in the agenda. What I'm looking for is, do you want to figure out if it can be useful? Obviously, that would be the best thing. Or what is your recommendation?
Uh, Judge, since we don't have any drawings to indicate structurally what's, how the rebar is set in the concrete and, and what the depth is, it would have to be evaluated by, by, by a structural engineer. So, in this case, I would, I would recommend that if we do hire a, a engineer, and probably since Govind's there, probably hire him to, to do an analysis on it. But then again, how much is it going to cost, right? If you have to do, determine what's in that concrete and how deep that concrete is, is it going to offset the cost of really just demoing the, the existing conditions of the, of the curb?
So, if, I agree with everything you said, but of course, you can't make that decision unless you get the analysis.
Yes, ma'am.
So, my question is, is could you please work with Michael and Commissioner Hernandez, county attorney? It seems to me that it's part of the dog park, in a way, right? In a way. It seems like if there's room to expand that scope of work that already exists in contract with Govind, to get that quick analysis and quick cost estimate, we're not going to know until somebody goes in there and figures it out. Could you do that by August 10th? Because that, this affects
Judge, if I might add, the contractor that we have on the splash pad is actually a Dura. So, they're the ones
Maybe they could do it?
Maybe they could do it. That's what I was going to suggest.
All right.
And if we need to demo it, my staff could demo it. It's, it's just a simple ring.
Right.
We can just go in there with skids there and just
Right. Could, could you bring that back to us with our Dura and just, you know, to the words, Commissioner Hernandez, we need to finish that resolution. Can you get that on an agenda for August 10th?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
That's a lot of time to talk to our Dura and see what's, what's going on, so that we can move forward on that. And also, the, the plans and drawings are available, so our Dura can make, we, we can, we can provide all that. That's, that's our work product. We own it. So, it's not, you know, he can evaluate it on premise with testing, but he, but he can also, and probably would need the specs that they use to, to construct it. Okay? I think that's it. That's good. Govind, what else do you have? And, don't get me wrong, I'm going to let everyone ask questions, but do you have anything else on the slideshow?
No.
Okay.
That, that's fine.
How about any questions? He'd already asked for them, but any other questions?
Mr. Paul has a question.
One second.
Judge, I may be totally wrong, but I was looking at their plans and everything there. Isn't there something in there that you cannot have a, it's a health issue, that you cannot have a picnic area in a dog run or a dog park? And I promise you, come Easter, if you've got picnic tables and stuff like that in there, that thing's going to be full of people picnicking.
Okay. So, I'm in a
You might check on that to see if it's something in there as a health hazard.
Okay. Well, we'll be able to answer those questions.
I, I, I'll kind of answer that. We had, like gentlemen said, we had the barbecue pits in there, and we had the same concern. So, working with the park director, we took them out. They are already bought, and it's in the possession, but we don't have that. I use the picnic table as a word picnic table. It's not for the picnic
Area.
Area. It's underneath the gazebo, so if you're sitting underneath the shared, shared structure, that's that table I'm talking about.
Understood.
Now, if somebody decides to go sit in that area and, and have a food or whatever, but that's again
We'll have the signage.
Well, we'll have the signage.
Yeah. It's going to be a signage and all that.
And then, Edward, will you answer the question? The barbecue pits? You can move them back to the other area where the picnic shade structures currently are placed?
Correct, all this stuff that was supposed to be in the shade structure, shade.
Will go.
Will stay where it's at.
Understood, okay, how about any other questions at this point? Any other questions, Commissioner Hernandez, are you satisfied, can I move on?
I'm satisfied, Judge, for now, yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Govan, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Govan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh, wait, Govan, one more question, because it was brought up earlier in public comment, I know this, I'm gonna oversimplify, but forty thousand square feet versus five thousand square feet? Without trying to answer my own question here, I really want you to, is that, is it simply that everything inside the five thousand square feet is still going to exist, but you have just put a huge perimeter around an area, because the, the concern from the gentleman was cost, in other words, how in the, the mind, for drainage purposes, how could it be that five thousand square feet is equal to the cost of forty thousand square feet, and if you could help bring that a little bit, honestly, it, as you know, I asked the same question.
It, it's basically using the same amount of, I would say fifteen percent more equipment than what you had in that five thousand square foot, spreading it out, so the dogs are not hitting each other if I use it that way in a congested area, while you have a bigger area for them to run around, play around, and have fun.
And is the perimeter fencing, though, one would think that, again, just simple math, five thousand square feet of perimeter is less expensive than forty thousand square feet?
It will be more expensive, but the way we are, are.
Designing?
Designing and, and utilizing the other areas, like I was saying, that the water draining to the pond, that's the reason we, rather than that water going to that location and, and then flooding that area, we created a pond, so now we don't have to worry about how we're gonna drain that water out of the pond within that area, so some of those things that we took in consideration, that we don't have to spend the money for, that we can utilize for other, which is like the fence, and, and that's how we incorporated all the cost estimates.
And, and so, and so forgive me for being, it's not really, I guess, polite to talk about it, but I have to ask, so the dog waste, that is draining where?
Dog waste will go some of that in the pond, what we are doing is, it will stop it, because what we have done is, around the pond, creating a berm, not berm, but one area where the water may go in, but other areas, the whole complete area, we are putting eighteen inch of, of astroturf going in and out, so anything coming in will be stopped through those astroturf area, and we discussed that in detail, how we're going to clean and all that, that becomes a part of the maintenance.
Okay.
We, we had a long discussion.
Edward, just make me feel good, because I've been learning a lot lately about.
We have two, we have two, Judge, so we're, we're looking at actually going to that county that you're working on, the one with the park?
Sugar Land?
Sugar Land.
Yeah, the city of Sugar Land, it's gorgeous, by the way.
So, so we're, we're gonna contact them, use the best practices, and work with them through the process.
For the maintenance purpose, how the park maintenance people can do, how maintenance, how they are.
Right, it's just the cleaning and the chemicals, it turns out that that is, there's a, there's a school of thought out there, that that's actually one of the reasons that certain parks along our bay has such difficulties, is because of the E. coli bacteria, and it's just so much more potent than human E. coli, so I just, I'm glad you're on it, Edward, I, I had to ask, I figured you would be, but I think that's something that, that you need, we need to be very mindful of, probably working with Public Health, they have that GLO environmental testing and water grant, that is city-county, it's not just city, it's city-county, why don't we, you know, use their expertise to help you in any way possible?
We, we have, and actually, we are, based on your last comments, maybe about three commissioners' courts ago, getting into a testing program.
Good.
So.
Very, very good, excellent, okay, well, Govan, thank you very much.
To answer, like you said, we have discussed and we continue to discuss.
Excellent.
To see how we can take care of all of it.
Mr. Govan, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
So you're telling me there's no drainage at all in that park?
Well, you're going to have some surface drainage, okay, but what we have done is, is the, the way the, the contours are, trying to get maximum water coming out in that, because that's the lowest spot, that's where we have put the pond, there are other areas, which is on the downside where all the, the brush and all that is, some of that with the hump, it's gonna go raining that side.
Yeah, I know, I know we're gonna have some flat areas.
Yeah, correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, and thank you so much, I have a lot of items to table, but Edward.
I wanna just say thank you, everybody, for the opportunity.
Of course, Edward, there is an item that is, I, it, I believe it's yours, and if everything's in order, I'd like for, before you sort of leave us, it's item number fifteen, it's a license agreement for a, a short period of time for the Richard Borchard Fairgrounds to be, I suppose leased under a license agreement to a company called Monterey Music for a concert, is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and do you recommend this, and is the county, everybody's, we're all in order, as they say?
We're, we're, we're good.
All right, well, then I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
It's, I'm sorry, it's three A. fifteen, I thought I said it, three A. fifteen.
Judge, this is, this is gonna be potentially a pretty big deal.
Awesome.
I mean, it could turn out, and, I mean, this is, this is something that we've always wanted to kind of pursue at the fairgrounds and never had that chance, and the fact that a local promoter's taking on that risk is, is exciting, and just kind of reminder that we still need to put upkeep into the fairgrounds and put some resources there, because that is a potential, you know, revenue driver for not only the county, because that would be a small amount, but also just the surrounding area, the economy there in Robson.
As Commissioner said, the promoter is looking at additional events during that venue, we are expanding usage of the parking lot, and Jenny and her staff has been very good about helping us with some other additional licensing agreements that should be coming back to the court, so thank you.
Good job, Edward.
Thank you, I've got a motion by.
We utilized that part.
Sorry about that, I thought there was a motion by Commissioner Modis and Commissioner Hernandez, did you?
Second.
Thank you for the clerk, I don't know if y'all heard that.
I got it.
Thank you, and no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Govan, hang on one second, I'm noticing that I had circled one more, and I need to ask Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Hernandez, item number twenty is basically an action item, so Commissioner Chesney asked me, is this presentation, the answer was yes, but then if you look at item number twenty, are you asking me to table that item, have you looked at it, it's the plan of action?
I don't, I don't think I put that one on, Judge.
That was from our office, Judge.
That's different.
Yeah, well, it, it's connected, but there are some matters that need to be voted on.
Thank you, I understand, I'm so sorry, I was trying to link the two, I know exactly what you're talking about now.
And that was one that Commissioner Gonzalez, again, for the record, had requested to be taken off too, so I.
Okay, well, we'll talk about it in, in, in executive session with Jenny, and then we can make that decision at that time, I just, I thought maybe it was connected to the presentation, it's not, sorry, Govan, all clear.
So we just did fifteen, which wasn't on our list, that's okay, but can we get back? Can we at least try to get our list done?
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to do that, just give me one second, I need to, I've been checking them off here as we go.
Trying to keep up, and it's really.
Well, it's, it's not that hard, you just have to listen, here we go, I've got items for tabling, number four, this is regular agenda item, Kara, three A., and now I'm gonna start listing, this is items four, five, I'm gonna go slow, Kara, only because it gives people a chance to read them quickly.
Okay, so are we doing ones that aren't on the list, it sounds like?
First of all, yeah, let me just, let me just table these, so we can get.
Okay, so you're, this is a table effort, is that what you're doing?
Yes, it is, table effort, okay, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Not fourteen, Judge.
Not fourteen, okay, I'm sorry, just erase that, Kara, I'm left off at thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seven.
No, you just did fifteen.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm sorry, I have a, my, fourteen, sixteen. God dog it, I keep saying it.
It's okay.
My bad.
We have.
Okay, let me go back to sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Some I'm skipping, I'll get to it in a second, so don't panic, if you don't hear me say every number, I'll explain in just a minute, some are going to executive. Okay, let me just take the regular agenda tables, right now, those are the ones that, that I would like to get a motion to table, and then I'm gonna address some of the remainders here shortly.
Okay, so it's.
Want to do it again?
Four, five, no, I'm just making sure, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I think is what you read.
That's correct, and I'd like to motion that, and I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we kind of need to, I should have done twenty-three first for the next commissioner's court date, but what, the way I'm gonna read my, make my motion, is that to the very next commissioner's court meeting.
That's fine, second, second to those tables.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. For the audience, I want to explain, those items, we were assured, when I say we, I mean commissioners, but, but mainly myself, that either they could wait, because we contacted our partner, let's say, agency entity, who, department head, whoever it was that we were working on with that agenda item, and they all said they could wait until next week, and so I took all of those that I just read, that are available to you online, for the interest of time, I'm not reading them all, but they're all available to you online, to see which ones we're tabling till next week, and we did this in cooperation with everybody, including the City of Corpus Christi, Public Health, anybody that was, we were working with, we got that accomplished, okay, now let me tell you that there are some, because I'm trying to keep us in order, on regular agenda, that are going to executive, and I'd like to share with you which ones those are at this time, that is item number three, three A. three, three A. nineteen, three A. twenty, three A. twenty-one, three A. twenty-two, and all of those will be tackled, I would say, or addressed in executive session, and then if we need to take any action out of executive session, you'll see us come out and do that at that appropriate time, so now I'm gonna move to twenty-three, which is important, is it'll help us actually get a firm date, number one also, let me go back, backwards, and say that I need a motion to include number one for a table, I missed it.
Which one, three A. one?
Three A. one, can I have a motion to table that one as well?
Yes, yes.
The same parameters, Kara, to the, the very next commissioner's court meeting, I've got a motion, a second by, by Commissioner Modis, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, okay, now I'd like to tackle item number twenty-three, which is to set a date, today, out of courtesy, we are only gonna try to work till about noon, which is why we're doing all these tables, or thereupon, and so it has been suggested August fourth was a date by our court administrator, eight thirty in the morning, and is there a, by the way, we checked with everybody's calendars for August third, August fourth, and August fifth, and the consensus was August fourth from eight thirty in the morning till approximately one o'clock.
And I just received from Commissioner Gonzalez that he was suggesting the fifth.
Well, somebody, I suggested that too, and somebody said they couldn't.
Wasn't me.
Commissioners, can somebody address while I grab some water?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I am fine on the fifth, but if we want to go to the tenth too, because it's so short.
No, I, I don't, I don't, because I've got, we've got too much business.
Monday of the week, is that?
I wasn't the one who objected to the fifth.
It's a Friday.
Friday?
Let me check.
I don't know who objected to the fifth, wasn't me.
Okay. Somebody.
There is, the only thing on the fifth is there is the big Carroll High School grand opening or ribbon cutting.
When is that?
That's on the fifth, so maybe if we can just recess, I don't know if we want to do that. It's at ten, but I'm good all day the fifth, I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I think the problem was on the fifth is that there's, there's, my calendar is full, but I mean, my calendar's, you know, full all the time, Maggie, I mean, I, I know what you're looking at, and it's gonna be a burden on me to miss all of those to represent our county, but you know, I don't know what to do anymore, I mean, we have to get business done, and I prefer the fourth, because that's the date that, you know, our calendars are open, but I'll just work with the future of the region folks, and maybe they can have me on the fourth instead of the fifth, Maggie.
That's right, that's.
It's the future of the region, it's a change of command, it's a, it's, it's wingings, it's Mary Carroll High School, you know, but again, if, if everybody will commit to the fifth, I'm happy to do the fifth, I'll change everything around like I did this week and like I did last week. What do you all say?
I don't have any problem with the fifth.
Okay, well, then I'll make, I need a motion to, to changes to the fifth at eight thirty in the morning, can, can you?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, so now we know.
Make the motion?
Yeah, now we know, Kara, where, where those tables are headed, okay? Now, I'm gonna move swiftly with a few more that we are trying to get accomplished, one of them, I think, if you could, she's online, no, she's not, can I get Anna online, I'll skip it for right now, and move to Michael in purchasing, it's item D. one, yes, yes, sir?
That should be tabled.
Hold out one second, what, Edward?
Item fourteen, which is that supplemental agreement?
Yeah, I'll go backwards, absolutely, it didn't, I forgot that one, let's do that one.
But you're back to fourteen?
Yeah, because he said, I thought, I thought that they had asked for it to be tabled, but they want to go ahead and finish it, so it's a discuss and consider approval of contract extension, request for Amistad Veterans Memorial and West Haven Park's new splash pad project, this is no cost, right?
So, so move, Judge.
Second.
Motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, okay, that's a no-cost extension request for the West Haven Splash Pad Projects, okay, on B. one, it's discuss and consider requesting additional funding for ERAP, the way it's worded, it makes it sound like we're trying to get something extra, in which case I would absolutely look for a robust discussion, that's not what this is, sometimes the words are deceiving, we already have approved this, it's just like ERAP, all we need to do is the administrative ministerial piece of pressing the button to get our second round of monies, we have people in the queue right now that we are trying to expedite checks to, this is what gets the federal government to give us the second tranche of money, you get it in fifty percent increments, we've already used that, and that's why I'm not willing to table this, because this is the free money that helps our people who are hurting get money for rent, all this is, is allowing Anna to press send to request the second money be sent to us in Treasury.
Can we just get Anna to explain that?
Absolutely, just get her on the line.
That's.
And I agree, the way it was worded, but it's, I, and I asked her to do the justification, so if you'll look in your justification, it says exactly.
It does, but I mean, it just, it was, it's not, I mean, the way it was worded.
I, I agree, and I called her and said, hey, make sure that, because you, we need that, we want this money.
And so, Judge, just for clarification, I mean, maybe buy us a little time if she,
Oh, go ahead.
Is trying to get on, but just some clarification on this item, so the ERAP, that is, that's the funding that we were given to help with individuals impacted, especially specifically by COVID, right?
That's correct, it's the Emergency Rental Assistance Grant, and what it does is allow those certain individuals and the tenants to work, our, our group is working with the tenants and the landlords, to make certain that, A, they're eligible and qualified, and then if so, it can provide an amazing amount of dollars for them backwards and forwards, I think it's up to fifteen months, and it also includes utilities as well.
And so this, this brought in, like you said, landlords, the renters, the tenants, and then involved our JP courts, right?
Absolutely.
So, okay.
And Anna, would you just explain, we were kind of questioning, it's, the wording, you know, we talked about this, it kind of looks like we're doing this new program, but in essence, we're trying to get the, the next fifty percent of our money that we're already due.
The sixty percent.
I'm sorry, sixty percent?
Yes, we only received forty percent, and so in order to request the next tranche, it was just available, made available, and we have to have seventy-five percent spent of the ERAP two money, and which we did, so.
So all this does is when you get to press send and make that request, it tells the Treasury, send us the next piece of it, which is sixty percent of our dollars.
On this one, it does ask how much, do you want it all, the rest sixty percent, or just partial, it's not like the.
Okay, what's your, what's your recommendation?
We did overspend on what we already received, so I would.
You want it all, I hear you.
We, we spent, I think, over a hundred thousand that we need to up, get back and make sure.
And why did we overspend?
It's just the, I think the miscommunication of, that we didn't have the whole hundred percent, like, or at least fifty percent like ARPA did.
I have to, I have to.
Wasn't, wasn't Hagerty keeping, keeping tabs on what was going on?
Sixty percent, they were trying to keep tabs. I, I don't know.
Hagerty gonna still be involved with this?
Will they be involved? They are transitioning to, if we need to, if we need to continue, we would have to hire a case manager, and they would be doing the training for their system, for their software.
Yeah, let me, let me back up on the overspending piece of it, we have a certain amount of ERAP two dollars that are available to us, but we only got a certain percentage given to us initially, correct?
Correct.
Right, so when we say overspent, well, what we're saying is that we need to collect the next piece of it, it's not an overspent to the budget of ERAP, it's just that we now need these dollars in order to pay for the people that have qualified for the program.
Yes, Neises County was allocated eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, from that, we only received the three hun, the three hundred forty-nine dollars, four ninety-one, twenty cents, that is forty percent of that.
So what, my, my concern is, is, you know, the overspent, so one, if we didn't, or maybe technically, but, or how, how it was accounted for, I, I want to make sure that that's corrected and, and addressed properly, because one, you know, it's a good program, right, I think we all agree, and that's why we supported it, in the early days of still dealing with the pandemic, was getting this relief, because people were going to be hit hard, because there was still a lot of people out of work, so I think we all agree that, that on point that it is, you know, a program that we need to consider, or not consider, but continue to use, I, I would just, you know, I would want to make sure that we have oversight, right, whoever that was, right, I, I thought Hagerty was not handling that, but if it was someone internally, I would expect that to be as well, right, someone here, I, I don't know if that would necessarily be on you and your department, or should have been in the past.
It might have been just that the whole transition of all departments and, you know, just rush, 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 and I think that.
I get you, I mean, all those moving parts, it's amazing that the federal government was able to kind of get something right in the early days of responding, that really helped the people, and I, I strongly believe and support this, so like I said, it may have been spending more than what we were, we thought we had, but we knew that, that the second, this.
Tranche of money.
Tranche, it's, you know, was coming in already, and so it was just kind of to cover those expenses, so obviously, we all know, we need to be careful with that, now that you have a handle on it, and I'm sure, I trust that, you know, you're gonna help us keep better track of that, and just as long as, my only concern with that would be, okay, if we were overspend a little, and we're gonna help make up that difference, right, with the, this additional sixty percent, because it wasn't the fifty like we, we said originally, my concern would be that we don't continue to go over, right, that we have to stop at the right point, so that we don't find ourselves committing over, you know, the hundred percent, I don't know if that's possible.
Yes, sir.
But I just worry that if, if that kind of happened already with the forty percent we got, and we thought we were operating with fifty, that then it's very realistic that that could happen again, working to the very end of this funding cycle, so that's my only concern, is that we have a, a method in place, a system, a point of contact, our point person would be you, and I'm sure, sure you'll continue to keep this court updated in course I day. and, um, to help us make sure that this, that we don't get to that point, right?
Yes.
That's my big worry, saying we don't hit that overspending at the end. Like right now, it's okay because we got this other part coming to make it up. But at the end, we, that's something that's, that just we cannot allow.
Right, and.
I agree, I agree, it's a good program, but like Commissioner Hernandez is saying, we do need somebody to be oversight. Uh, that doesn't mean that we need to go out and hire an agency. Couldn't we have in-house people do it?
Anna, we need to stop and, and definitely, first of all, clarify the overspending. There is no overspending. You really need to clarify that.
This is kind of like the, a grant. It's a grant, you usually don't get upfront money. It's reimbursable. You spend it and request reimbursement. So technically, we were allocated eight hundred and fifty-three. Uh, the rules and conditions for this money changes with Treasury. Um, we thought it was be the same thing as, uh, ARPA, you know, we're going to get it one year later. Well, this one was a different thing and then we got the notice and then you're going to have to request, do you want some more? Okay, we sent that email. Then it's like, okay, now fill this out. Do you want some of it or all of it or send everything back? So that was what I'm bringing to court today.
I understand the overspend part, you know, but it's like everything else. If you're given a certain, allotted a certain amount of monies, this is what you get. And then you spend more than what you got. To me, it is overspending and you, you'll make it good when you get the other allotment, right?
Correct. Yeah.
But, uh, I mean.
I think, again, it's, that's, that's really, unfortunately, I know exactly why you use that word, but you can see the confusion that it's causing. So let me answer, let me have you answer Commissioner Hernandez's other question, then we'll go backwards in time again. There is no overspending because the way that this works is there's a portal and people apply. Imagine a long line of people who are looking for assistance. And the first step is to qualify them, to make certain that they're eligible. And we put those people in the queue. If you'll recall, we helped as many people as wanted our help in the county. And then the city had run out of funds. We used our ERAP two dollars to be able to help city people.
Yes.
And the administration, the only way, these are super complicated, unfortunately, uh, programs and eligibility. And to answer Commissioner Hernandez's question, the answer is, is that we have transitioned into training the new trainer, which is going to be social services and that's why Rebecca Rock is here. And we're going to be doing our own administration in the future. And if we needed technical assistance or advice, yes, they're available for us. Um, but we, the county, are going to be in charge of our ERAP two. But there is no overspending because when we accepted ERAP two, we accepted it in its entirety.
Correct.
All right, so there's no overspending, Commissioner. The only thing is we ask for money to be given to us at certain times. We have to guess how many people need our assistance. And so when she says we're a hundred thousand over, all that means is we need to make certain that we request the rest of it because we've already expended that which we received initially. It's no different than, you know, again, typically grants are worse. They make you spend a hundred percent and then you have to request reimbursement. This one's so much better. So everybody's been living within the budget. And in fact, to your point of, you've got to make sure you don't over, um, allocate, that is done meticulously, um, to make, there are so many people in the portal that we could not help. In other words, there will pe, there are people in Neises County, both in the jurisdiction of city, of Corpus Christi and other cities, that will not get help because there will not be enough money within the eight hundred thousand that we were allotted completely. And just so you know, we have meetings on ERAP every week that Anna participates on, in. So she is doing a very good job monitoring it and that's why this agenda item is important because she needs to make that request. And again, Treasury has very unique, these are all brand new programs. There's no template, no blueprint. She's doing everything she can to react to the notices that are given to her. That's why this action item needs to be taken so that we can request it and have the money come in. But I want to make absolutely sure that everybody hears this. There is no overspending because we've, we've received and accepted our allotment.
Will the people from within the city qualify for this loans? Cause I was told, I had some ladies call me and I had directed them to, uh, social services and they were told just because they lived in the city, they didn't qualify. Our loans are strictly for the people out in the county. Is that true?
Well, we, that was true at one point and that's when they brought it to court to, uh, when the city kind of, uh, used all their funds, then the request came to this court to allow city applicants to come and use the county money.
So the public from the city can go and qualify for these loans? Is that right, Rachel?
Rebecca.
Oh, Rebecca, I'm sorry.
His question is, can the city, can people living in the city qualify?
Yes, they can. And to address the, the, um, residents that you sent to my office, I'm the one who actually tried to assist them with the portal. And the portal was closed down at that time, um, due to work authorization and that's why they couldn't get the application in. But yes, they would have, um.
Couldn't they, uh, gotten the application and it wouldn't have been overspending and they just would have, you all would have made up with it, uh, when you got this other monies? Because they, they really needed the help.
Yes, I don't know, uh, they weren't accepting applications at that time. So I don't know if later they were able to apply or not.
All right, thank you very much.
There was a gap when the city ran out of money and we had to bring it to court to get them set up. So if they applied during that gap, they wouldn't have been able to qualify. But then we came to court and saved the day. And so we are, we are definitely, uh, and hopefully they were, you know, they were able to reapply. Well, I don't know because I don't know who they were, but today as we sit here, uh, the problem is there's still a lot more assistance. I will tell you that's needed. I will tell you, there's some talk at the national level that for those jurisdictions that can show need, there may be a realignment of dollars. And this is why training social services and Rebecca's going to need some assistance inside her office to do this is a good thing because it could be that later, those jurisdictions that show need might be given additional dollars. Okay, that's not, that's not fine, that's just a, that's a concept that's happening. Uh, because as you said, some people still need help. By the way, it's very tied to COVID nineteen. It's not just anybody who has rental assistance needs.
Well, I just want to take this opportunity to let the public know that they can qualify, they can go back and apply. And I wish they would because they do need the help. So thank you for letting us know.
Thank you, Anna. I hope that that helps clear, clear it up. Um, so is there a motion to allow Anna to request this extra funding that's already due to us?
Motion to approve.
And second for Hernandez? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, if I look at the next one, I have items one, two, three, and four in C as being requested to table. Um, there might be a legal question on five, but I'm deferring to Jenny on that. Do I need to take item number five to executive session at this time?
Yes, please.
All right, so items one, two, three, and four table to August the fifth.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and then Michael's here on D one, which is administrative as well.
Well, it is, but, uh, I've spoken with Ida and we've, we were okay to move this item, uh, for the benefit of Commissioner Jack to be here. It's, uh, concerning the entire, uh, new fleet order for next year for the Enterprise fleet. And we've spoken with Enterprise and this is not going to affect us negatively, uh, by moving that date.
All right.
I didn't see this as one that Commissioner had requested.
He didn't ask for this one to be tabled, just so you know.
Because it wasn't on the list to be considered.
Yeah, why would we?
No, 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 John, it wasn't on the, it wasn't on the list that was sent out to us that was going to be heard. So he wouldn't have objected because it's not on the list. If you look at the.
Well, and I think the reason it wasn't is because Ida told me it was okay that we could postpone.
Yeah, we had a conversation early in the week, so.
All right, so you're asking for it to be tabled to the tenth?
Yeah, I, I would actually prefer the tenth because I have a conference I'm going to be at on the fifth, so that would be better for me.
Motion table to the.
That was the note I got. All right, motion to table to the second.
Tenth.
I'm sorry, the tenth. And, and Michael, because we're tabling so many things, I think it's going to be super important. If this is the new lease, get as much information, individually call everybody. These are things that I don't think are, there's no substantive change in the contract.
No, no, the contract is, is stable. This is just, we had a five-year plan and we're just rolling out that plan.
Right.
Uh, we're looking for forty-eight vehicles this year. We had done fifty-five in each of the first two years. We're still waiting on some vehicles from last year due to the circumstances with the industry and the supply chain availability.
Just check with everybody so that, so that we can move efficiently, given that we're, we're postponing that which really, you know.
And, and, uh, I can go ahead and share that Enterprise on our behalf has already, uh, placed our order for us contingent on the funding being approved by the court. But they're able to absorb if for some reason we needed to make changes.
I feel much better now because of the supply chain.
We're not missing it, but we do need to get our order in, so when we.
Absolutely.
So this tw, these twelve days then, how's that going to impact this much?
Not at all because like I said, Enterprise has already preloaded that order for, on our behalf.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
We're in the queue then, we're.
We're in the queue.
We're in the queue, yes.
All right, great.
I didn't want to lose our place in line. I was concerned about that as well. And I spoke to Anastasia with, uh, Enterprise last night and she confirmed that to me.
All right, that's, that's good background. There's a table and an up second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next set is the auditors and it's my understanding we're going to tackle item E one only.
May I interrupt, I apologize. Um, I think, um, Ms. Nardone was here just to make an announcement on an item that might save us some time. Could, would that be possible? Cause I'm not trying to take words out of her mouth, but.
Is that true? Okay, well, um, I'd have to do it un.
Well, I think it'll take care of one of the items is.
Public comment?
Well, no, it's on item, um.
Well, it's an executive session item.
Right, but it's, I think, she's telling me she wants to.
I can do public comment. I don't know, I can't do it on a, on a.
Uh, can, I, can you, Jenny? Can you do it? Can she just make a comment on an executive session item that?
I guess so.
Agenda, right?
I guess under public comment.
Whatever.
I, I think it, I think you have discretion.
I'll discretionary, I'll just, I'll just, yeah, it's noted. Well, let me just announce what I'm going to do when I get back from the public comment. And that's, we're just going to take up item E one and I just want to confirm that with the auditor. It's just the, the financial report that you'll be presenting today? Everything?
No, just, uh, she's going to, she's going to present.
Two and three.
Okay, so I have it backwards. So let me table E one real quick, like, guys?
Wait, what?
E one, you're going to table it.
E one, so.
Motion to table E one per request of Dale.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Barbara tabled it, or no?
August fifth.
August fifth, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, till day, till August.
So I'll come back to you in just a moment, okay? I'm going to, I'm going to take things a little bit out of order here and I'll reopen a commentary period for an item that is important, uh, recognizing, uh, May Nardone to the, to the, uh, podium. And if you would just, for the clerk, recognize who you are.
Thank you, Judge and county commissioners. Um, I'm May Mendoza now, I'm no longer Nardone.
I know that, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, so just for the record, so I am legally back, Mendoza. Um, but anyhow, I wanted to, um, talk about one of your agenda items. I think you were going to talk in closed session about the attorney I had retained, um, Jenny Boyd for, uh, renegotiations of my contract with the park board. And, um, it was brought to my attention and I was at the park board meeting yesterday, um, by the attorney that they felt that it was a conflict of interest since Jenny used to be an attorney here with the county and even unethical, which I found kind of harsh. But anyhow, I just, I wasn't sure what to do at this point moving forward. So I feel like if you do feel that it's a conflict, that I would just retain another lawyer at this time. Um, I don't want to cause any conflicts, even though when I've spoken to her, the whole reason that I retained her as an attorney is I'd run into her and knew she was very knowledgeable back when she was the park board attorney. She always was on the ball, knew everything, would tell us and them, no, you can't do that. I was very impressed with her when she was the attorney here. So when I ran into her, I'd asked her some questions, who, who would better know her, you know, how the contract works. I said, well, can I do this? Can I do that? I'm not sure what to do. And she kind of told me a couple of things and she says, well, if you need an attorney, let me know. And I said, well, it wouldn't be a conflict. And she said, well, no, because all the negotiations with the park board are in open public record. There, she has no fiduciary knowledge of anything that would, there's no private client privilege. But regardless, I just don't want to get, I don't want to waste my time and money with this any longer trying to hold her and asking her for advice on this issue. So at this point, if it's going to be a problem, I'll just remove her so you don't have to even take that off your agenda.
Okay, thank you for the information and we're going to take all that with us into executive session. That helps, uh, provide additional resource information. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to move to, um, we only have a few more. And because Angelica's here, I'm going to go ahead and ask the auditor's office to hold. I'll skip E, we'll come back to you shortly and we'll move to F, but give me a chance to table some items inside F. Uh, item F one is going to get tabled. Can I have a motion to table that?
So moved.
And I'll second, and all those in favor signify, so sorry?
A judge, is there a date?
Oh, till August tenth.
Tenth, okay.
Sorry.
I'm trying to split them up on five and ten.
Yeah. Good idea.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have already dealt with item three and Angelica, I think you're asking us, I'm sorry, I think we had agreed to table one item of yours. I'll let you take the podium and tell us the one that you'd like to discuss. I think it's item number five you want to discuss with us right now. You tell me.
Well, if I, if I can do five and six, I think I had three other items that were.
Tabled?
Tabled.
Okay, let's take, let's take them one at a time and you set the table for us on item number five. And then I'm going to have some, we'll have some questions on, on six. But five is considered for the clerk, it's the deletion of a second assistant position. And just for the record, that's a forty-three pay group, step four, and creating a felony chief intake position, uh, pay group forty-one. So it looks like Angelica, we're deleting a higher one and replacing it with a lower one.
Yes, so we had the resignation and loss of second assistant, Michelle Putman.
Yes.
That second assistant position was created specifically for her, for the eleven years of knowledge that she had acquired. She took on the CGIS operation. She took on all the warrants. She was just exceptional and that position was for her.
Got it.
It would be almost, I, I think, impossible to find someone who could actually come in and do that job, um, that is required of that second assistant position. And so, um, we, I am asking to go back to just a felony chief, which is what existed before that second assistant. It will be a salary savings. Uh, obviously it'll be a, a, a decrease in cost. And so we're hoping that you will allow us to do that so that I can get that, that posted.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for any, uh, well, first of all, I'll make a motion to do that. Is there a second so I can call for some discussion?
Second.
Okay, now let me ask anyone if you have any questions. That was a pretty.
Just discussion, real quick.
Forward explanation.
Uh, just for the record, and I think, I, I, I'm just, again, and I'm, I'm okay because I see this a little differently. This was one that Commissioner Gonzalez asked to pull, but this does require, this does represent a salary savings and you're reducing a position and.
And I'm twelve attorneys down and this felony chief spot is crucial for CGIS.
And, and that's what I was going to ask is, this is a timing issue for you, correct? And it's the same kind of thing where.
It is crucial for CGIS, it is crucial for me. I cannot do my job and Michelle's job. It is impossible.
And, and that's, and what I'm doing and Angelica's just, I, I don't want Commissioner Gonzalez to think we disregarded his questions, but they're really softball questions, kind of like they were to the other folks that were just, if you'll tell me the time sensitivity issue, I think Commissioner Gonzalez will understand that.
I needed it yesterday. I needed it yesterday.
Yeah, and that's.
I needed it yesterday.
Just what I want to do, that's all I'm trying to set up for all, all these things, is to make sure that Commissioner Gonzalez knows and disregard him, but these are very time sensitive, so I would call the, well, I, if I can call the question or however.
I think I did a motion, and a second.
Go make, motion second.
Any other questions? Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, post them sign. Okay, now, number six is a little different, and.
I don't have background on six.
What now? You, you need more background?
I don't know, I don't have background on, I don't know, I don't have that in my packet.
Okay, and so, item number.
I think I might have told Iday I would table it, and I'm thinking I'm catching her off guard, and I'm sorry.
Right, but, but. But, well, here, here's, here's the problem, and, and we also have a standing. I'm always, that was my understanding too, but we also have a different scenario. And that is, this court made a motion that if you needed, um, to hire somebody, that we were gonna basically almost suspend every other rule that we have to get that person hired.
Can you just tell me what this one is?
And so if you'll give this, give us a little more background, I might do a subject two in my motion that might help Iday and help my, help us and help you. Why don't you give us a little background?
So we have two sixes, well, we have two sixes right now. Stephen Byrne, who we just hired, he was the one that you created that job description, and I will tell you, he's already gone to trial.
Yeah, I know.
He's already gone to trial on one of the highest number in jail defendants out of the one forty-eighth, and secured a conviction. And he prepared and did that trial within two weeks. And so he's already, I mean, saved that money, uh, on that inmate, so I have Frank Garico, and I have Stephen Byrne, and they are felony sixes. I am trying to keep them with the creation of twelve defender positions that are gonna be making what my fives make. I have to start thinking retention. I have to start thinking, how do I keep the people we have? And so.
Can I make this easy for you? I, I, I'm gonna make a motion to pass this. I've gotten the background on it with the salary savings.
And I have salary savings, and I need permission to use them, but I'm not asking for a single penny more.
No, no, and I was gonna say that. And I wanna, that's what I was gonna point out too, is the salary savings based on the last action that we just took will more than take, make for this, and I, I, I've got the background now that I've gotten, so I'm good to go. That's, that's my motion.
And, and if you don't, I, okay, and if you don't mind, just go ahead and say with this, because you have it in front of you.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
The salary savings from the first one is X, and you can tell us, and then the, and then the, the thirty-eights to thirty-nines would be Y, and they, they make, do you just represent to the court that that makes up for it?
It does, and in addition, I had attached a certification that I obtained from Dale. Actually, I actually have over two hundred thousand in salary savings from the twelve vacant positions that we've had.
Right, but this, but this will, I mean.
But this one's better, forgive me.
Yes.
This is better because it's a permanent situation.
That's what I was gonna say.
Right, so, so the, the, the previous item, uh, showed a permanent savings of thirty-five nine, thirty-five thousand nine seventy-six. This request for an increase is eight thousand eight hundred nineteen, which is also permanent, but that is a net permanent savings for the county of twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, roughly.
A thousand.
It's about, it, this is, this request is eighty-eight nineteen twenty. The saving was thirty-five nine seventy-six. Based on that cost savings, this should, this, this motion represents, uh, a cost savings of twenty-seven thousand roughly, roughly for, uh, the county, so that's my motion to pass.
And I think it was seconded already.
Yes, it was.
And, um, the only.
For clarification, the court voted to suspend the rules of the personnel manual? You said the, voted to supply.
We said that if, I have to go back with the motion, but if we, it, we mentioned that if she needed to hire somebody outside the pay period.
Right, pay period.
That.
Oh, that, that part.
That part.
Just the pay period thing.
Yeah, the pay period, so like if she needed to.
So the other parts of the personnel manual still apply.
Of course. In other words, if she needed to do something like tomorrow on that pay period. Now, I was gonna just say, since you've got a motion.
For everybody. I don't think we just did it for her. I think we did it for everybody.
You did it countywide.
I think we did it countywide. But I have to say, she was the catalyst for it.
We did it, again, we did it for everybody.
The bottom line is, is that.
Call the Angelica Hernandez, um, rule.
Okay, so what I want to say is that you can see that you've got the support, okay?
Absolutely.
So now I'm gonna move over here, and I'm gonna say that, um, we need consistency because everybody's hurting countywide. And the reason we think this is good is for the reason that was just articulated, because it's a permanent solution. But I hope you know and can respect that it's gonna be really horrible for us to have to come back if you say, okay, now I need my second assistant position at forty-three again. I know you know that. I just need you to hear it from the dais that we're doing this because we think it's in the best interest of the county and your office. But as you know, we can't keep changing, t, t, and although you're reacting to the changes that are not in your control, I just, I know you, you understand what I'm saying. Our goal is to really attack our budget in a way that creates consistency, reliability, so that other departments, you know, so that we can have a real budget.
And if we, if you can, I don't know if it's possible, this changed to be effective for the next fiscal year because I turned in my budget not realizing that Michelle would be leaving, and so this will continue into the next fiscal year. This isn't something we're gonna come ask for an amendment on the budget. This will just carry over into, into next year.
Yeah, don't worry, we're gonna change it. It's a salary savings. Um, okay, I think that that sets the table for the concerns that from other departments might have as to why we're doing these changes. We always, we always, this close to budget, we're not, Iday and I and, and the executive budget team, we cannot be doing reclasses two weeks before we set the budget, three weeks before we set the budget. This one is unique in that the person that occupied the space is no longer here. You're switching that one. You're almost doing a reorg inside. We just need you to keep it that way. Is that fair?
It is fair, and she also received a supplement out of fifty-nine. That will not go to this new chief position.
Got it.
So that is gone now. So just for, to make sure the auditor knows, like, that's, that's, that supplement is done now.
Alrighty, I'll call the question then. That was, those are my questions, unless anybody has any others. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the auditor. There's, there is two items. It's a budget change order.
May I be excused, Judge?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's number sixteen, it's E2. It's budget change order number sixteen. E2, and why would ask, yes, yes ma'am?
F2?
What?
F2.
F2.
I'll come back to it. You're absolutely right. Thanks, I'll come back to it. Appreciate it. Um, let's do E2 since I called her. Uh, let's do that budget change order number sixteen.
Yes, ma'am, we submit, submit this budget change order number sixteen for your approval. These are standard, uh, budget line item increases and decreases.
Okay, uh, does anyone have any question? Iday, you've, you've reviewed this, and you find everything in order?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Let's also go to the capital project budget change order. It's number one one one.
Yes, Your Honor, um, it's a budget change order for, uh, one line item to move, uh, monies to cover for, uh, reallocation of budgeted funding. Uh, submitted for your approval.
Okay, Iday, same.
Yes, and these are, are fine. And we, and remember, we, normally we approve here, the court approved before we take in these changes. So it's something that the court approves previously, and then we just move in the funds to cover those, uh, for those, uh, approval projects.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, with that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, and a second, please? And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, the next one is, uh, one that, um, is F2. And, uh, F2 is the discuss and consider increasing the cadet correct, corrections officer pay for the remainder of the twenty-one and twenty-two fiscal year. We do have some good backup here. Um, I would like to set the table a little bit and share with you that at every jail population meeting, every board of judges meeting, every conversation with the Sheriff's Officers Association, and indeed with previous presentations by our sheriff, it is no secret that we are down eighty-two as of maybe two days ago. The number keeps going by ten almost every week. What's happening to us is that the neighboring counties are offering a certain dollar per hour. And although we have the twenty percent retention pay, it's still not getting us to the same equivalent. And so we're in crisis, in my opinion, and I don't use that word, um, you know, loosely. Um, and I would not bring this to you, uh, if I did not think that, that it was absolutely essential to prohibit the drain that's happening. We can't even afford to lose one more each week. And so the, the, the concept here is, I worked with Dale and Iday, and if the base pay were brought up ten percent with the retention pay that's in, in, established now, that would get us like ten cents difference from the neighboring county. I don't even want to say the neighboring county for fear someone will go call them.
So Judge, how does this affect the contract? Do these people, are they not in the collective bargaining?
They're not. They're not. That's a problem that we could hopefully address next time, Brent.
Okay, and then.
And so this would just be to make certain that nobody else leaves us to the neighboring county, and what really got this, my attention two weeks ago is the flyers that are up.
So you're just saying, you're basically, and this is one too, this, I don't mean to be, continue to say the same thing, but this is one that Commissioner Gonzalez also asked to pull. I don't know why, um, but maybe someone can go ask Sandra and see what the, if there's some questions on this one. So i- i- so basically, are you just saying that we're gonna up it to where it equals the premium pay, and it's gonna be permanent, or?
No, that's the other good thing about my agenda item.
Because I don't have much background on this one either.
So this agenda item really just speaks, it allows our court to say ultimately how we want to treat this in budget. So it's a sixty-day change to allow all five of us to either decide to make that change permanent in the budget, because what it really does is it takes their base salary and moves it up ten percent to sixteen dollars, I think, and eighty-five cents.
But, but per.
Just for the six, just to the end of the fiscal year.
And, and we're.
And then we would make the decision to keep it still.
So again, I apologize, I didn't have anything in the packet, so I'm, I'm not, I read, but I didn't have it, so I'm not trying to ask because I just am not quite getting, so um, it's, but why do we do it for sixty days? It, wouldn't that indicate that we're gonna have to do it permanently? I'm, I'm, maybe I'm not following that.
That is, that is, and I'm sorry, because we did have the backup. I'm not sure where it didn't get your notebook, but that the reason is not because I want to do it that way. It's because I feel like I have heard you all say you want to make those decisions in budget together. What I'm asking for is reprieve right now so that we don't lose anybody else. It's sort of a good faith measure to say, this is really critical to keeping the jail open, literally.
And it's to stop the hemorrhage, is what you're saying.
It's to stop the hemorrhaging until we make the budget decision.
Okay.
And, um, I would love for it to be permanent.
Okay, so again, just trying to get clarification. So instead of this, so right now in the background says fifteen forty-four, ours is the current rate, three oh nine is the additional. So what you're, you're saying it would be fifteen forty-four plus this ten percent plus the three oh nine?
Yes, and that gets us to match who's stealing all our folks. And it just gets us to a little point, but remember, we're about to go into budget in a few weeks, and we can remedy that or not, but it stops people from stealing our folks right now.
I, I'm, for sixty days, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
And it may be sixty-five or seventy, Brent, I mean.
Whatever, till budget's done. Motion to pass, I mean, I, I.
All right, and is there a second?
Hold on, let me.
Okay. And now go ahead.
And then funds available. Where, I don't s- see that, how, how does that?
So, we, we said that it would be a total of ten thousand?
That's on.
And, and we said we could do American Rescue Plan Act, we could do general, I mean, it's, it's up to the court, um.
How much do you think? And I may, maybe there was a supplemental item, and I didn't get that, I'm sorry. That may be on me, but I don't see it.
I feel like I may put, I've put.
How much is it?
Say, I think that.
I believe so. I wanna mask it up. I'm, I'm getting it.
That's from Julie, Judge, yeah.
Okay, so then I, I would, uh, I guess.
It's actually less than ten thousand. Let me, let me, let me turn to my book here.
I just, we just need to clarify where it's gonna come from.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I just wanted to, so I, I know you said that you've been in contact with the, uh, Sheriff's Officers Association, um, with the sheriff on this, and I mean, I, I I trust in that this needs to be advocated for, that's why you brought it forward, why Julie has her name on it, submitted, Iday. And I know it's a Friday, right, and so it's tough to get people here, but sure would be nice just to have someone say ditto, right? Just, you know, you know, we have Zoom, at least get on for a couple of minutes and just to come on and say, yes, this is what we want, right? I'm not doubting what, what we need. I'm in full support of it. But, um, I, I think for anything that this important, just looking into the future, that we should have somebody that says, right? This impacts the sheriff directly. Um, it, it didn't have to be him, right? It could be one of his, one of his chiefs. It doesn't have to be, um, AC Carpenter, right? It could be one of his officers from the, of, the Sheriff's Officers Association. Just someone else, just to kind of say, yes, we desperately need it, uh, because we're hearing the information. I'm sure those in the public that are paying attention would say, yes, let's do it, but it's just always better to have others concur, right? We always want that background information. To me, when they put those words out for the public to hear, to me, that's the best background information we can get, aside from the numbers, the dollar amounts, so. Just for future, if we can work on that.
Yeah, or if you'd like.
It's a Friday, and we knew the dates around, so that's, this is not gonna be a deal killer for me, just as we look on any future.
But for the future.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we still have to solve the funding piece of it, um, and I am gonna look to, uh, I'm gonna look to, did you happen to do a calculation of, of what that would be, just for the, just till the end of the fiscal term? I know we did it, uh, with Dale, and I'm just trying to, I was trying to look for it, but I felt like it was, it was minimal, it was like.
I know Teresa had worked the numbers.
She did, I'm gonna look.
But currently, we only have about ten cadets anyway, so it's for, mainly for recruitment purposes. And to recruit somebody, it usually takes us about four weeks to get somebody on boarded.
So, do we have any idea what we're talking about, on the, on the numbers, so, so we can.
So I just couldn't remember who sent the email, so now that I know it's Teresa, I'm gonna look it up real quick. We can hold on this till we come back, but, um.
I just think we need to designate where it's gonna be funded from.
I, that's what I think.
And just to clarify some numbers on this.
It's under ten.
What the position is currently at is fifteen dollars and forty-four cents. So I heard you mention ten percent, so that would be a dollar fifty-four. So that would take it to sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents an hour.
Correct, but then they get the twenty percent, and that's how we get close to the twenty dollars, and that's what the other county is offering. And that's where we get on parity.
Correct, so it would be the sixteen ninety-eight plus the twenty percent.
Yeah, that's already established.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and what we're really asking, and we're gonna take a quick, quick break to go into executive. We can bring it back. Why don't you go call Teresa or do whatever you need to do. Get us the actual number.
Teresa's on?
Here she comes.
She's online.
Teresa to the rescue, Teresa.
Hello, Court.
Hello.
I was just wondering, Teresa, if you could assist us, i- if you need a little time, we can, we can actually give it, but what we're looking for is what that really means if for, if we just had the cadets that we have right now, that, uh, additional, you know, dollars, it's, it winds up being sixteen. Ninety-eight. Ninety-eight. So moving the base pay from the fifteen forty to sixteen ninety-eight for the cadets that we have, what that means uh, for the end, from now to the end of the fiscal year.
Just get her, yeah, take a few minutes, we'll come back.
And we'll come back.
With the exact amount, please, just so she doesn't get rushed or.
And then we'll have. Yeah.
Give us something wrong.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll work on that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We'll hold right now, okay? All right, so I've got a, I think that Kara helps get us through the agenda. And so right now, I'm gonna give notice that Commissioners Court's gonna go into executive session. We're doing so, uh, in authorization by the Open Meetings Act, chapter five five one of the government code. It's in accordance with Vernon, sections five five one oh seven one two seven three seven four seven four five seven six eight six eight seven. And we're holding this to consult with our attorneys with matters relating to litigation, real property, personnel, uh, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, and any other matter that may be discussed in executive session. And upon completion of executive session, we will come back out into open session and take any appropriate items up for, uh, consideration and action. At this time, for the clerk, it's eleven twenty-six AM. I'll ask everyone who doesn't need to be here to please clear the courtroom. And also, just for the record, uh, we're gonna take a five-minute, um, ba- break for the, for the bathroom, and then we'll come into executive session, okay? All right, thank you. This is gaveling out at eleven twenty-seven officially. And tell you guys that the time is one twenty-six PM, and we're back on the record. We're out of executive session. We do have some items to take up. The first is, we're tabling an item that I will, I will table. It's item three A3. And, um, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? Okay, the only discussion I have is Iday's gonna help get the factual information that was requested before the next meeting. It'll be tabled to August the 5th. And all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that takes care of any tables. But there are some, there is some action that comes out of executive session, and I'll ask, um, that the first one, and I'll find the related item.
I do think, uh.
It's, it's, um, I think it was.
I do think on twenty-one and twenty-two, since they're on the agenda, we just need to table with no date.
Let's do that. That's a regular agenda item, twenty. Let's do that. That's a regular agenda item, 21 and 22.
And that's just a motion to table with no date.
Okay. Motion to table with no date. Is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. So item number 19 is a companion from executive session. And I think we do have a motion regarding number item 3A19. Commissioner, is, is Commissioners, is there somebody that will make?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Judge, uh, the motion would be to ask the Nuasis County Coastal Parks Board to consider limiting all new reservations made to four days and three nights. And to have a special meeting next week to discuss that, uh, request. Uh, in the Commissioners courtroom to help facilitate the further settlement discussion of that issue. And in regards to that motion, we're citing Section 3.21045 and 3.21004 that requires this court to make this motion, uh, in regards to this request so that the Parks Board can legally, um, uh, consider this as is, uh, according to the law as provided to us.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay.
And any further discussion? Lorenzo, we can provide you a copy of that, uh, if the audio wasn't, uh, is it enough, might help.
And then again, this is just an ask of the Parks Board. It is not a direction, just to be clear, because that's what the law indicates that we need to do.
Thank you. And with the motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There's an, also an item. I've got to find the companion, but it deals with the county right of way and county property along County Route 52. And, uh, I'll ask Commissioners if there is a motion regarding that while I look at the number.
Judge, the motion there would be to direct the accounting attorney to work with the owner and title company counsel to ensure, and Public Works to ensure, um, adequate safety while that issue is being discussed.
Fair enough. Is there, uh, there's a second and, um, I'm just looking for, for Lorenzo, the number.
C, it's on there, C5.
Thank you so much. C5. That's why it's not on the regular agenda. It's on C5. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Finally, there's just one last matter and it really has to do with just receiving, uh, future information. And so is there an I, is there a, um, uh, a motion with regards to, I think the item was number 20. And, uh, in the regular agenda, and that's, uh, regarding a plan of action regarding Hazel Bazemore Dog Park. And is there a motion there, Commissioner?
Yes, make the motion.
What?
It was item 3820. You were going to direct the county attorney, uh, perhaps to, to receive a packet of information regarding the analysis of our future plans.
Sounds good.
And there's, is there a second?
Second. Sorry, I didn't know I was going to do that one. My bad.
Is that okay?
Sure.
All those, go ahead.
No, no, that's.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. That concludes our, um, yeah, he did. That concludes, I believe, all of our items. I do want to remind everybody that the court, okay, Julie, I'm sorry, did I miss one in HR?
It's a cadet corrections officer. You wanted the numbers?
You sh- I certainly did. Thank you.
Can you go back to that one?
Yes, that's, that's on HR and that.
Two.
Right. Item number two.
I need, I don't understand that. I saw that real quick, but I was trying to stay paying attention. So how much extra is it?
How much extra?
It's going to be about $9,700 from the general fund and then another $1,900 from the premium, for the premium pay.
Okay. But premium pay is already, uh, funded.
Right. So it's separate.
So it's separate.
Where are you seeing that? What I got from Teresa, I don't, oh, oh, that's the blue thing down there. Okay.
At the very bottom, because she had figured out at a full rate of a new employee, but it's not a full rate of a brand new employee. It's just a difference. Right, the delta.
Right. Just the delta. And that's what I thought. Remember we, I, I quoted 10,000. So we're real close, 9,700.
Judge, I would just take, take, take this from ARPA as well and be done.
Uh, motion, please? Motion to, to make these dollars come from the American Rescue Plan Act. We know they qualify.
Absolutely.
And, um, there's, I'll make the second. Uh, and any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to adjournments and memory. I know a few of us have some, um, who would like to begin? Commissioner Hernandez, you don't have, and Commissioner Amadas?
Let me, uh, let me pull it up.
No worries.
I can go if he's, whatever. Um. This is, I'm sorry, this is not the right one.
No worries. I'll do one while you're looking. It's a, a wonderful lady by the name of Betty Sanchez. And I knew her family, know her family very well. And she was born on July 7th, 1950. And she married and had, I love this, three handsome sons, Cruz Jr., Christopher. And, um, and there's a note here that Christopher was named after her favorite actor, Christopher Lee and Guy. She'd always been a bus driver for the independent school district and from city buses all the way to school buses. Driving was her life and she loved Roy Miller High School. And, um, Jeff, she also loved Jeff Gordon and the Veterans Band. Those were her passions. And Betty was in the Veterans Band Flag Corps while her late husband Juan J. Sanchez served in the color guard. Everywhere Betty went, you can bet that she had on a very flashy hat with sunglasses on. She was already ready, she was always ready to get together and go out to eat. She loved life as much as she loved her family and all of her friends, and she will surely be missed. And when I attended the services, one of the things that I loved the most was all of the photos and the, the, of her as a bus driver with all of the kids and they had, um, little models of, of school buses. And you know, we think about people every day that do these amazing jobs in our community. And we forget how important they are to us. Think about every day how she greeted children and, uh, on and off the bus, both, um, at, at our CCISD and of course, when she worked at the, at the RTA. And I just want to express on behalf of Nuasis County and myself personally, our condolences to the Sanchez family. And we thank you for the sacrifices that your mom made, uh, to make certain that the most important things happen every day, getting our children to school. Thank you. Commissioner Amadas?
Thank you, Judge. I have one. Um, earlier this month, uh, the community, the Robstown community in our county lost Rafaela Fela Kalvo Lermah. She was 76. And, uh, she was an insurance agent for approximately 30 years, uh, was a Robstown, uh, ISD school board member. And she was actually the first female mayor of Robstown. Uh, she served three terms. She was a loving wife, mother, sister, aunt, grandmother, great grandmother. And so of course the community definitely mourned her passing. Uh, and she was laid to rest on July the 13th uh, with, um, with her, um, funeral mass that was celebrated at St. Anthony's Catholic Church in Robstown. So my condolences, uh, to the Lermah family. Uh, they're still very active, uh, in Robstown and in the area. And, um, just a great public servant and businesswoman. And so she will be missed.
Thank you. Our condolences for that trailblazer. Commissioner Chesney, I think you have one.
I actually have a couple of judges. Thank you. Uh, the first one is, uh, William Billy Casner passed away July 16th, uh, 2022. Passed away peacefully. He was born in Corpus Christi. He was a loving husband, father, grandfather, brother, uncle, and friend to everyone. Family was a big part of his life, as he always put family above everything else. And knowing Billy as I did and not super well, but I know he, that's, that, that, I could probably stop right there and I won't go too much farther because that's exactly right. He put family above everything else. His greatest joy in life was being able to watch his family's baseball, softball, basketball, and soccer games. Number 25 will always be in there, of the hearts of, of the Casner family. Um, also to my good friend, I don't have the obituary yet, um, Charles Pettis, Xavier Coach Pettis, um, passed away last night. A great man. I, I, just a great man. And he will definitely be missed, uh, passed peacefully with his family around him. And, um, he will definitely be missed. I, I'm gonna, um, I'm going to ask Commissioner Amadas to read this one because I am not going to be able to get through, um, Mr. Daniel Dane's obituary without getting him emotional.
Sure.
See if I can do it too. Uh, I served with Daniel on, uh, City of Corpus Christi Charter Revision Commission way back in 2003. So, um, uh, Daniel was born to Daniel Walter Dane Senior and Joan Marlene, uh, in Cuba, New York. Uh, throughout his childhood, uh, uh, Daniel's family moved around, um, to different marine bases. And then eventually, uh, he graduated from high school in New Jersey. Uh, Daniel started his career Domino's Pizza, and so that's what I think many people recognize him for and with. Uh, in 1985, as a customer service rep and delivery driver, was eventually promoted to manager and supervisor in 1991 in Dallas. Uh, there he met Catherine Francis Green in 1989 while she was attending Austin College in Sherman. Uh, when they met, uh, Catherine was a part-time lifeguard, uh, there at the college. And it's where, uh, Daniel, um, and his foolish diving antics grabbed her attention. And as anyone who knows Catherine and Daniel, from the day on, she spent her life trying to keep him in line while he fearlessly pushed every limit. They married in August of 1991 in, uh, Clear Lake City. And they just, uh, they would have celebrated their 31st anniversary. Daniel began supervising for the Domino's franchise in Dallas, uh, just two, two days after they were married. And in 1998, um, he purchased the Domino's franchise in Corpus Christi, which would eventually become DWD Pizza. Uh, under Daniel and Catherine's leadership, um, their franchise had grown from eight to 15 stores. And I know one of those was, uh, just a few years ago in, uh, in Robstown where we celebrated with a really great opening there with him. Uh, Catherine started working directly with Daniel once they moved to Corpus Christi. And each of their talents were complementary for the business with Daniel shaping their future and Catherine handling the day-to-day operations of the business. Uh, Daniel's passion for life led him to a variety, variety of hobbies and interests. On any given day, if he wasn't at work, he could just find him fishing, watching his beloved Corpus Christi Ice Race Hockey Team, cycling with friends in the MS 150 or cheering on his friends at the racetrack. He loved deer hunting and outdoors and, um, he loved going to the deer lease to pass time. Daniel leaves a great legacy of servant leadership in this world, in our community. Um, when they moved to Corpus Christi, uh, Daniel and Catherine just jumped feet first, got involved with leadership Corpus Christi, served as commissioner for Special Olympics, baseball, ballyhoope, and helping Catherine, uh, serve, uh, with the Junior League of Corpus Christi. Also, they were active with the Women's Shelter, Domino's Partners Foundation, Beach Cleanup, Beach Comers, Chintura, the Dom- Domino's Franchise Association, and most recently serving as the Chair of the Nuasis County Hospital District. Throughout his lifetime, Daniel and Catherine donated countless dollars and hours to those in need. Daniel was preceded in death by his parents and survived by his lo-, uh, by his love and wife of 31 years. And his children, um, or his daughter, sorry, uh, Kimberly Dane and his grandchildren, uh, Macy and Isabella. His sister, uh, nephew, niece, and other, uh, nieces and nephews. Uh, and so any of us that had the privilege to know Daniel or his best friend, he was intentional about every conversation, every decision and every relationship in his life. He lived his life to the fullest and was an inspiration to all of us in power of positivity and world of possibilities. He truly lived the American dream. So, uh, there will be a celebration of life for Daniel on August 13th from 4 to 7 at the Omni Corpus Christi Hotel. And in lieu of flowers, uh, he's being asked to make a donation to the Women's Shelter of South Texas, also known as the Purple Door or the YWCA of Corpus Christi. So of course our deepest, deepest sympathies and condolences to his family and he will truly be missed.
A, a very, a great man and a great friend. And, uh, thank you for picking that up for me. But, um, he, he definitely will be missed in this community. He did a great job with the hospital district and everything that he did. And, um, just condolences to that family as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just want to echo before we do our last one that, uh, we were, Iday and I were able to go to the hospital district board meeting and extend our condolences. He just did such a great job for us as the chairman of the hospital, um, district, uh, board, particularly during the global pandemic. And, um, I remarked to everybody there that his strong suit was that he was always a patient advocate because he had been a patient. He had that empathy. He understood access to healthcare and he argued for it vehemently. So we'll remember him always with a smile and, um, and may you rest in peace. We have one more, I believe. Is it okay if I do it?
Who do you have?
Sam Susser.
Yes, please. And then also I wanted to mention too, if I could, Judge, uh, Tom Utter, uh, I don't have his obituary, but Tom Utter also, that may have been the one you were looking for.
That was the one.
He passed away recently. Uh, I think he was in Dallas and, um, certainly want to, and I'll let you read Sam's. But, um, Mr. Susser, Big Sam was, I, I grew up in that, in that house. And, and boy, having Robert Adler and Sam Susser, two titans and giants in this community go around the same time is just unbelievable and huge loss for this community, so.
Um, I, I totally agree. Um, it's funny, it's stopping here. Let me just see if I can.
Somebody pull it up.
Oh, can you, let me see if I can.
Can you see if, I'm trying.
Yeah, that's.
It's stuck though. Pull it up in the, see if I can pull it up in another way.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find it.
We're going to see if we can pull it up in a different way. Tell me who gets it first. Caseum.
This one?
Yes, yes, ma'am. May I have that? Thank you so much.
You got it?
Yes. Perfect. As you said, we've lost two titans, Sam J. Susser. And it's with great sadness that the family of Sam Susser announces his passing at the age of 82. He passed peacefully surrounded by friends and family after battling a long illness. He was born in Corpus Christi on October 26th, 1939 to Sam and Minna Susser. He graduated from our alma mater, Ray High School in 1957 and from the University of Texas in 1962 with a BBA in finance. Sam was a devoted family man who had ongoing love affair with his wife of almost 60 years, Pat Motzman Susser. Sam's life was defined by his love of family and his many close personal relationships. His entrepreneurial spirit is evident through his 60-plus years career, starting at the University of Texas, where he began a birthday cake business that he eventually grew to 14 other college campuses. Soon after, he and his brother Jerry developed the first self-serve credit card-activated pay-at-the-pump fuel system in the United States. After graduation, Sam joined the Southland Corporation, which we know as the 7-Eleven. Where his role culminated in executive vice president, he also served as president of Sidco Petroleum, chairman and CEO of Plexus Financial Services, and president of the Continental Parts Company. Sam served as a member, including chairman of the Board of Directors of Susser Holdings Corp., which began as a fuel distribution company founded by his father in the 1930s. It grew into a publicly traded Fortune 500 company that operated Susser Petroleum Company, Stripes, and Laredo Taco Company, employing 12,000 team members before it was sold in 2014. Sam was most recently serving on the board of Susser Bank, of Susser Bank. As a recognition of his contributions to business, Sam was inducted in the Texas Business Hall of Fame in 2009. In addition to his life and business, Sam was a devoted family man and loyal friend. Every morning for the past 20 years, one could find a handful of cars outside of Sam's and Pat's house due to daily 6:00 a.m. gin rummy game being played among old friends. Their home was a place of joy, ping pong, dinner parties, the occasional football games for grandsons and their friends in the front yard. Sam rarely missed a school performance, tennis match, baseball game, or golf tournament. He loved family dinners and never allowed one to happen without his traditional ladies and gentlemen. He loved family dinners and never allowed one to happen without his traditional, ladies and gentlemen, unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, speech, as he thanked and recognized all who were attending. Throughout football season, Saturday was set aside for Longhorn Football, and Sunday was for the Cowboys. Sam truly loved it all. Sam is survived by his beloved wife Pat, brother Jerry and wife Elizabeth, sisters Harriet, husband Jack, Susan, husband Al, his son Sam, with his wife Catherine, daughter Sherry, husband Michael, son Stephen, and wife Jenny, and his seven grandchildren, Zach, Max, Sophie, Patsy, Sam, Brooks, and Eli, and one great-grandson Ezra. And there will be, there was a graveside service on July twenty-sixth, and in lieu of flowers, donations are to be sent to the Sam Susser Playground Fund of the Jewish Community Council, right here in Corpus Christi on Everheart Road. You can also send in his honor or memory to the McCombs Business School, the University of Texas, U T Southwestern Medical Center, or the charity of your choice. Again, our condolences to the Susser family, who have made such an indelible impact on our own community. And we will certainly miss this great legend of Corpus Christi. I think that concludes our adjournments and memory, we do stand adjourned, and the time is one forty-nine p.m. Oh, wait, hold on, you're right, Lorenzo, the Court, Iday told me that we didn't formally table Item V on the consent agenda, that needs to be tabled, it was a ratification of Ira Miller, and we'll do it the next time for August the fifth. Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, thanks, Iday. And thanks, Connie, for the use of your iPad.